...that into a conversation about city council, what's city council's role and what is your, how are you supposed to act? He's got this picture in here. And it's interesting because it's got, it kind of goes in a clockwise order, one, two, three, four, and then five, six, seven, eight. It starts out by saying, "You're here to act on behalf of somebody or something." In a board on a public company, you're acting on behalf of shareholders, right? In a board on a private company, you're acting on behalf of generally whatever that private company is aiming toward. Our role as city council members is not to act on behalf of our individual selves, but our role is to act on behalf of the community, right? Those that we, and not just the one or two we've talked to, but think about what's the right thing to do on behalf of the entire community. That is our role. You all are elected by district. Do you represent your district or do you represent the city? But primarily, I would say you represent the city. And your job is, we invite, we're voting by district, but you don't just represent your district. And that is an important message that we always talk about. The second thing is here is know their, know your job. I'll spend a little bit more time on that in a second. What is our job as council members? And then goes into, well, she'll probably talk about knowing our job. Is our job to tell Laura and Molly what to do? Tell Ben what to do? Tell Jeff what to do? Is that our job? Is our job to tell the chief what to do? Either any of the chiefs in the room? That's not our job. That's Ron Bowman's job, right? Our job is, we have two distinct higher and, we have two distinct personnel responsibilities as council. One is, our role is to have a pretty heavy hand in the city attorney, right? We participate in hiring or the retiring of the city attorney, and we participate in hiring and retiring the city manager. That's pretty explicit in the city charter. All of you have read the city charter? Yes. Okay, 'cause I'll reference that several times today. And I reread it again this morning at 3:30, just to make sure nobody pulled fast forward. So I've read it more recently than anybody, like, that's my job. Our job is to set policy, our job is to set targets. So when you think about something like the master plan, we participate in that typically. We get community input, and our job is to ensure that we're, we're holding the city manager accountable to achieving what's laid out in things like the city charter, I mean, the city master plan. Our job is not to direct staff. That's pretty explicit in the city charter. In fact, that's called interference, is what that's called. And we start saying, "Hey, my man, I need you to go," I'm already violating the city charter when I do that. "Hey, chief, can you just, hey, can you, Molly, or I can talk to you, uh, Laura, can you just tell me that you can go talk, can you go do something that's not..." City charter explicitly says we're not to interfere. That's the city manager's job. We have, we have to have, our job is to have high expectations with the city manager on behalf of the entire city, right? And I would have that to be the entire community, frankly and honest, because we have domain beyond the city limits. And oftentimes, people like to narrow down, our role is just within the city limits, or we only talk to people within the city limits, and I don't believe that. Know our job. Next thing is set targets in here. That's kind of obvious. The next thing is identify risk. Those are the big picture things. That's kind of the macro view of the world, and that's what you do as a board member, too. Are any of you on boards? I know that you are. You are, you are. No, no, no. As a board member, I don't get into the details of the operation. Our job is to do is to kind of operate at a higher level, at a macro level, not a micro level. For micro managing, we should be hired as a staff person and not being elected official, or we should be on board. After you do that, then you're acting, I'm sorry, then it says, "Delegate the work." Okay, there you go. Go on, go do. That's our job. And then it says assess performance. How do we assess performance? Just talk a little bit about that, right? It's not just an annual thing. Assessing performance, in my opinion, is on, it's not a daily thing either, but it's not an annual thing. There's a frequency that we should be looking at. How are we doing? This is how, and then goes into how's a, set an air or practice discipline and report back. Report back to whom? Report back to those that you're acting on behalf of. Then you go right back to, "I'm acting on behalf of, let me tell you what's going on," and then the whole cycle starts all over again. That's what this book has in there, which I, I just pulled it out as a reminder to myself. I'm sort of there. If you guys are interested in it, I'd like to give you a copy for folks, and I'd save you three hours. Because that's how long it took me to go through that. You have three of those, we can pass them out. I actually thought it was a good book, and I'm on the, I'm gonna use a parallel example. In Santicos, I'm the CEO of the organization. I was on the board. I stepped into the CEO seat at the board's request when our CEO needed to go. As a board member, I had a role. Now, I'm, I'm still on the board, but I'm also the CEO of the organization. And I can tell you, in that role, there are certain things that drive you crazy. As a board member, I never meddled in the staff's business. I never fired things directly and said, "Hey, I need you to go do something." That is just not my job. It doesn't bother me that, in my board, I'm talking about Santicos right now, it doesn't bother me when a board member says, "Hey, do you mind if I talk to so-and-so about whatever?" No, go ahead. Or if they reach out to that person, that communication happens pretty directly. But when I have board members that start telling my staff what to do, really, you're tense. And I call that person out very directly. And so I'm playing the role of CEO, and then when I back on the board, I don't tell myself what's, I just tell myself what to do when I back on the board. Tell the CEO what to do. So, you know, as board, our board at Santicos, I laid out a five-year strategic plan for them, and I said, "I'm holding accountable to execute these deliverables. I'm gonna report back to you every time we get together, and I'm gonna show you the progress that we're making on all the projects that I've laid out inside this five-year strategic plan." And I do that regularly. And our board meetings don't last that long, and Santicos is not a huge organization. Annual revenue is maybe $120 million. It's a little bit bigger than the city in that regard, so I like comparing these two. I might have a bigger balance sheet, but it doesn't matter, it's still managing. Santicos is about 900 employees. This is less than 300 employees here, right? 280-ish, is that right? I think it's similar in size and scope, so I'm always gonna draw parallels from what I'm doing there. So I'm, I'm Ron in Santicos. I've said, "Been there quite a few years," so I've only been there nine months, 10 months. But the way I operate there, I always try to keep perspective, right? So again, we operate at a macro level. We need to hold Ron accountable for the things that the council expects. We need to be clear about the targets that we set, and we need to be, we'll have some discussion later on about priorities, because that's a tough thing. As Brandon, you guys coming in, I know what it felt like when I came in, Brandon, last year. Came in ready to hit the ground, like, all these ideas about, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this, and I'm gonna do that," and I learned very quickly, that wasn't my role. I had to figure out what my role was, and that had kind of helped me a lot. I think Ron and Brandon helped me a lot through that process last year. And as I've adjusted and I've learned what my role is, it's not that hard. If you look online and you read what's the role of city council, I was reading some, I read Wikipedia, I read Wikipedia, I read how they did it in Australia, how they did it in other countries, how stuff works. So I went to all these different places, and none of them said, "Talk poorly about the staff." That wasn't an obligation of any city council I could find. Talk poorly about each other, that wasn't out there. Talk poorly about the city, that wasn't out there. I don't remember seeing those as anybody's responsibility in anything I could read online. It was always about charting a course for the future. It was about holding people accountable, they were there to execute that job, and monitor the performance and report back to the constituents. So I thought I'd pause right there, just say that's kind of my perspective, even here longer than anybody, from a council member perspective. Agree, disagree, add to, detract?
No, I agree. I mean, that's, I think early on, we were told that, and, and you kind of have to find your, your way and your place on council, but I think the most important thing is we're in this together, and we're working together for the good of the city. And I think we need to always keep that in mind and not, we're gonna disagree. You and I disagreed on various, but we don't take it personally. We don't carry any animosity. We vote, go our separate way, and, so I think that's first and foremost, is we need to operate together and for the good of the city and not take anything personally, especially the vote, because everybody's got an opinion, and we're gonna disagree, so I think that's probably actually the point.
But not taking it personal, not making it personal is a big deal. And sometimes, it can be viewed differently, but I agree. What about you? Anything else that you disagree with that you want to add?
No, I mean, I, I think it's all good. And, you know, at the end of the day, the fact that the team concept is what we're all about, we're trying to help you all, you all have constituents out there, ask you questions at all, and we're trying to be as responsive and as possible can to you, as quickly as we can to, you know, at the end of the day, and Tim's heard me say this, and I've heard me say this several times, so, in a way, you know, at a council meeting, three of you decide to go right, we go right. Three, one go left, we go left, and that's the bottom line. So, you know, if, if two of you don't get your way at the meeting because of, the other three voted a different way, it's what it is. So keep on going forward, but, you know, I, I think having, having regular discussions is great. I think us knowing what your expectations are is great, and I can tell you that everybody from, from my staff and all, we're here to serve you all, to help you all achieve what you all want to get done as a group. So, you know, we, we're all about communication. I'm enjoying my, my, talking to Tim about his perspective with the private center and learning some of the stuff that they do over there, and hopefully I can learn from you guys, too, some, some things that are out there. So it's, it's not about Ron Bowman, it's not about Tim Colerick, it's about us as a team, a no-lying team. So we are here to help you, and I'm proud to tell you that the staff you have just from here are all dedicated, good, honest people that want to do the right thing for the community based on what you ultimately decide you want us to do. So we're looking forward to, to being a, being a, a great team.
Mike, Tim, Colerick, you guys have been staff members for a long time. You've been through a lot of council members, a couple of my own. What's your perspective on city council role?
I don't agree. I don't disagree with anything you said.
It's, uh...
In other words, I agree with everything you said, but I've seen that presentation many times, too. But in general, you know, the, the positive is, we, then we look forward to change in, in implementing a new set of policies and rules. The challenge becomes when the, the new policy is dramatically different than the old. And so it takes a little while to turn the ship sometimes. So let's, let's just talk about lighting. If we, if we have a desire for more lighting, then we enact laws and rules that say, "Let's increase lighting on streets." And then there may be a shift, and we go toward less lighting, but it takes a while for that stuff to get implemented. And so when you're in the middle of implementing F and flow comes, that sometimes gets stiffed. But that's what we do.
I think the, the idea of, of what you're saying is, I'm taking it personally, because I think that's where you decide what you're supposed to be doing. I was talking to a gentleman that was, had 30-plus years at, at Austin P at a high level, and I was telling him about the changes on council and everything else, and, of course, another FBI guy in the room, and we all agree that as long as we, staff members are doing our job to the best of ability, then we have nothing to worry about. And I think ultimately, you know, as, as the quote said, if the council decides to go left, we go left, and I think... You know, when I look at, you know, my first year as chief, I told him, I say, "We need, like, six or seven cars," I thought he'd go out of his chair. But I felt necessary to tell him that, because if I did, then I'm not doing my job, you know? And so, but it ultimately gets up to him to decide if I get one or if I get three, because everybody eats at that same table, per se. You can't take it personally. So, yeah, so, you know, your councils.
Right. I know when I came in, one of the perspectives I had, I thought, I thought Ron was this mysterious boogeyman. I really did. And once I got to know him, I was like, "Oh, he's really working hard for the city, hasn't been in a long time, really cares about the city." I didn't understand how a lot of things works around here. And as I got to know people, and respected what people have to deal with day in, day out, can you imagine if you had, like, a new, a new spouse every year?
It's smart enough just to have one. Change spouse every year, and it's like, "Hallelujah, what are the expectations?"
Yeah, I think that's sometimes what it must feel like as a staff member, as a city council member, it's like, we got these, all these new guys coming on, and this is the first time, it's been a while since we've got three come on. It's like back in the, our times of this, of this, almost of this country, this country called Bernie, of the city of Bernie, and barely, rarely have three come on at the same time. Really, I wouldn't consider it four, because you don't, I mean, you're, you kind of came on out of cycle. We got a lot of new people on the council. If I was a staff member, that would cause a little bit of trepidation in me, it's like, "Holy crap, what's about to happen?" But I think that if we, if we are, as Nada said, we operate and we think about the, we're operating here as a team in a way. It doesn't mean we all have to act the same, we don't all have to believe the same thing. We're acting as a team, and the team that we're representing is the city. And I think we can put that in front of everything. It's not, it's not a small group on hard topics, right? It's, we gotta look at it for the greater good of the whole city, and that's hard. I, I have struggled with that over the past year sometimes. And that's where dialogue is really, really important. And so, the bad thing, and then, and when, a lot of Molly and all the bad things later, after, she'll talk about that, things we can't do, unfortunately, we can't have these kind of conversations very often, because we could die right away. And so, right now, the only time we can all get together and talk is for special called city council meetings or regular called city council meetings. So I think as we work together and respect what our role is and respect what the staff is here to do, it's very different than the elected officials in the county. The elected officials in the county are the staff, right? That's why they get paid 30, or 40, or $50,000 a year, because they are staff. They don't get to say, "Hey, Ron, can you figure this out?" They gotta give you all their own research. I've talked to every one of those, some of you have talked to many of those guys, and that's not easy for them, because they have their chief cook, bottom washer, elected official, voter, they have, they have a tough job. We're lucky that we have staff, yeah.
I just want to say, too, as another person with 35-plus years of watching, councils change, in my case, boards change, too. There will be this level that we're hitting, you know, as the ship flows, returning this new direction. The best way to get it going where everybody wants it to be is how fastly, how fastly, how quickly we can establish trust in the wing staff and, and council. Where we send you something, we give you the data, and so where you actually believe it. You know, obviously, always question and always verify, but where I've seen it stall out or fail in the past is when that, when that doesn't exist. It makes moving anywhere difficult.
I agree with that, and in my view, on trust is, we only gain mutual respect, admiration, and trust through shared experiences. It's the only way to get there. You can't demand it, you can't, you can't really request it, you gotta demonstrate in action, you gotta have some experiences together. If the guys have been military, that's, that's, trust is really, comes fast, because you gotta trust each other, rely on each other. Here, it's just the life of the city and 17,000 people, give or take, that we represent.
Our two analogies, the ships changing direction. When I was in the Navy, when I was on a tour squadron for a couple of years, and my boss was a Commodore, everybody understood, you know, the Navy Master Chiefs run the Navy. And you get these officers to come through every two years, and they're manned, and they either put you out, or they either get clear directions. And they try to get an assessment, and figure out where that's headed. And I think one of the most important things early on is our clear objectives, and that don't make too many of them, but just be clear about your communication. And there's one thing called gun dating in the Navy, and I had to have ships ready for going out to sea, for a Gulf, and you had medical readiness, you know, or inspections. And so that ship had to be ready to handle any herdsie they were on the sea. And, you know, if you had a, a chief that wanted to borrow something from a ship that was moored up next to it, followed it aboard, to get everything on board for the inspection, and then send it back to the other ship, in other words, it wasn't really be ready. So you let it be done very early, as a new officer in that situation, had no gun date. It's a simple thing, but very critically important. Because I, I see a lot of this, you know, a lot of that you guys have been around, you understand, you're, you're not necessarily Master Chiefs, but you know, you know how the system works a lot better than we do. So I think the most important thing now is really definitely making those clear objectives.
Right. Concur. Just to take one other analogy from Navy, used to use this at USAA a lot, and a lot of Navy guys are, when we were making decisions on behalf of the customers that we served, sometimes we had to make decisions that would impact those guys in a negative way. You can't, you know, if you're making underwriting decisions, or you're processing planes, or insurance companies, or, but we always talked about, if you're at 2,000 feet undersea or 1,000 feet undersea, and you get, your submarine gets hit, you gotta shut off a portion of that submarine so everybody doesn't die, right? So back end is wounded, and I need, I need 85% of the guys to stay alive, I'm not gonna sacrifice the entire ship to try and save three guys in the back. Eventually, I gotta shut that off. And that's the decisions we have to make, unfortunately. I'm sure in the police and fire, you guys have lots of those decisions you make as well, if you're thinking about life and safety all the time, but sometimes, sometimes, you gotta make hard decisions. Okay, that's, that's kind of, I think, our goal. We'll talk about that more as time goes on. Any other comments or thoughts about that?
Just make one point that, remember, I had questions about storm drainage, and just took a trip with Jeff and Mike, and in that hour of experience, you know, I realized all the things I didn't know, how important that is, like, you get constituents who ask you questions that still may never actually understand how long processes take, but as a council member, just taking that, that ride, so to speak, whether it's that or something else, was just great. It was just a point, it's a good way to, for you to understand it, helps you evolve your mindset going forward.
Again, trust, by the way. Talk, just make sure that we're clear on expectations of each other. What would be your expectations of me? I'm Brandon, I've been in this job for now, what, 10 days? I don't know, figure it out. What are your expectations of me? I wanna start there.
I have two questions I always ask every employee I ever hired, no matter what their position, I'm the front desk, I'm the most qualified surgeon in the country. By the time they got to me, I said, "Well, if you obviously are qualified, you wouldn't be here." So it's only have two questions. And the first one is, "Are you lazy?" And they look at me like, "Do you mean that?" I said, "If you're lazy, I'm gonna fire you in 30 days or less." And he said, "What's the second one?" I said, "Are you a pain in the, you know what?" Because if you are a pain in the, you know what, meaning, meaning that for you, everything is a problem. Every day's been a problem, you know that. So if everything is a problem, I can't work with you. I, I accept that there are problems, but you come to me with solutions. Can't have a problem constantly. If you can't do those few things, let's, let's divorce right now and walk out the door. So don't do those two things.
Yes, sir.
That's okay. That's all I have.
I think I've mentioned all...
I think, I don't think I have to worry about those two, hopefully.
Street crew is not lazy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm kind of making a second point there.
I'd say, I think whatever main priorities we come out from, whether it's a combination or what have you, or your own, is, you know, you're ultimately the person out there guiding that vision, right? We have the votes to help guide that decision, but you're kind of the face of leading that, like, it's the staff, for constituents. So my biggest expectation is for you to carry through on those top priorities that we have.
So represent you guys, represent the priorities, not my personal agenda, represent what we all come to conclusion on, that would be an expectation I should deliver that to, right? Other expectations you guys have of me, staff?
To represent the city well, and the city staff out in the public eye.
So not wear wigs.
Yeah, but, 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 you know, when you're, when you're out there, you're not representing just as constituency, you're representing the staff and the working people as well. To always be gracious and professional, and, as you say, not take it personally.
That's fair.
I would say communication.
You can't throw that away, 'cause I'm throwing that away for your...
Well, we've gotta hear what you're thinking. We can't help counsel if we don't know what you're thinking. A lot of our processes and whatnot are in place, because usually, there's a reason for them. We can explain the reason, and it's not that we're against change, but there may be a law, there may be something else that interplays with that. So we expect the communication. Let us help you. I think that's a, what was it, that, Tom?
Help me help you.
Thank you. Thank God.
But then show me the money.
You get $150.
How about you cut me a little?
So you were talking this to me on that, you were talking...
Oh, no, I'm, I'm talking to the entire council about that. If you've got questions, you gotta ask. Another channel you have to go through, but you've gotta ask so we can share our experience and give you the understanding of what we have. And if we don't know, we'll go find out. That's our role.
Can you get the facts before you react? It goes back to community action.
So obviously, let us explain.
Yes, get the facts before you react.
Right.
You trying to get, okay? Is that what I want, to get the facts?
Yeah, if you, just to jump on that, customer service, you know, I view us providing customer service to 27, 28 different departments. And as I tell my staff, we have so many ways to make people laugh. I mean, it's just endless, almost, and if you have a lot issue down the road here, and we've made somebody mad, that's all I think about, "Oh, damn, say that people are mad, and they, they let us, we just do that also." We try to focus on that fact that it's customer service, and try to explain why we can't do this, or why we can't do that, and stuff. Just realize that you're out there representing the city on a daily basis, and, you know, you make that one person mad on one thing, they just never forget that, it seems. But, you know, I, I view it also as, we have your backs, and hopefully you all have our backs, and, you know, we try to operate as a, as a team, you know, for, for the mayor, Dick is just that, that relationship where he and I talk about everything on a regular basis, and he kind of knows what I'm doing, and vice versa, and we go from there, and try to, try to, to help each other do both our jobs, so to speak. So, you know, it's, it's like yesterday, with Ty and I were at a meeting yesterday with the K V people, et cetera, and I'm sitting there, I'm sending the mayor a text message, letting him know what's going on. He's obviously very interested in that meeting we were having yesterday, so my, my goal first and foremost is to keep all of you, all of us, as, as, as best I can, go from there.
Joe, on the, don't be lazy. How do we hold each other accountable to that? What would it look like if one of us was lazy?
Just eagle sky low, be prepared.
So the staff does a great job of preparing a lot of material, sending it to us, and we get it all at the same time. We all get it on Friday, right? And so, you have, read it. I, I believe, personally, I believe, we waste a lot of time in city council meetings going over stuff that you should have read or written, personally. You know what's in there? If you read it, then Laura gets up and she reads it again. It's like, "I don't need you to read to me. I, I wish we could change how city councils actually operate and say, 'Everybody read it. Any questions?' But, I mean, I would love to get there. When I send stuff out to my board members, I send it out seven days in advance, they come in, we're covering a lot of material, it takes us one hour to talk about everything that we've done in one quarter.
Well, one of the problems, though, is, with that, and I understand what you're saying exactly, but the, the difficulty is, when you're in a board, and I'm on a board of a very large nonprofit university entity, you can kind of do what you want, but in a public board like this, sometimes you have to make comment, not because you haven't read it, or because you don't understand it, but because you wanna try to get some talking points out to constituents who seem not to fully grasp the law or the reality. So that unfortunately is sort of a logistical issue that I think we all face to some degree, it's like, we wanna talk.
That's true. Sometimes when Laura's up there, or myself, we're doing it not for your benefit, but for the audience, because they haven't taken the time to look at the...
For all three people in the audience.
Yes, well, it's, sometimes it is.
And for good or bad, we have a number of activist citizens, and I think that's overall good, that many people are busy, and so they filter their information through the, the information they think from those individuals. So if we don't comment on certain things, they just take it at face value, and it's, "Oh, the city did this."
And when I'm presenting, I really expect that y'all have read everything.
I mean, I think that the efficiencies of maybe staff and that mean to repeat it, I could see, but I agree with Joe that like, we don't get to do this, 'cause our chance to like actually voice opinion or constituents' opinion in a, in a, in a forum, which then maybe makes a future decision, like, oh, I remember when, you know, someone else said something about that.
And then it's memorialized forever in video.
And, you know, if it's something that you feel like even with everything, you need a little bit more clarification, it helps if you say it and you hope that few audience members might understand it, but you also hope that press might possibly print what you just said, so that if, if anybody does read the paper, they might get factual information instead.
Right, it's all context, it always might provide context.
Right.
So Laura's expectation was pretty clear. I expect, she said very clearly, but I expect you've read everything that we've sent out. I expect that too. I think that's a fair expectation. Um, and I think the constituents in our city would have expected the same thing, we're representing all of them, we should be doing our job. Other expectations that are unsufficient up here? I run in the W, normally I write P I T N, but just to be polite, I did W P I T N, pain in the neck. Normally it's P I T N for me in the office. Pain in the arm. Any, any other words, or something. Don't be lazy, represent city staff council, um, communication, we'll talk about, we'll talk more about this later too, that's a big deal, it's my number one thing, is communication. Um, I'll state a fact, this is not a judgment, um, I was on city council for, how long was it on? I think the first, I was on city council from May until November. It's the first time I was called by the mayor. Don't expect that from me. I intend to talk to you guys regularly, and I should, and if you guys have questions, feel free to call me. Um, but that's a long time to go, that's just facts, I'm not studying any opinions about that. Um, I think that we should be, um, understanding what's going on, uh, I think that as we communicate together, communicate with staff, there's no gamesmanship going on. It's a pretty open environment, right? All emails, all text messages, our public record for us, right? Y'all know that, I'll, we'll talk about that in a second, as it relates to city business. So, um, it's all open anyways, we might as well be open with each other, not, this isn't a, this isn't a chess game, this isn't a war game, it's just be honest. I'm notorious for being very direct. I try not to be mean. My wife tell you I don't always succeed at none. But I do take, I do take this, I take this role seriously, I think that from an elected standpoint, I know you guys are taking this job seriously, you're gonna like, I like to have fun too, know the staff takes your job very seriously. Um, so great, if we're all serious, then it's amazing what we can accomplish, especially, especially if we're all aiming at the same direction, that gets back to priorities. All right? Okay. Any other comments from you guys back there? Yes, Jeff?
It's not an expectation, it'll be a request, that if there are gonna be questions, depending on the depth of those questions and the differential that it can cause for your presentation to begin with, heads up is appreciated. I mean, if it's a question that goes well beyond what you would normally get, and you need a timely prepare your answer in order to move us all forward, we would appreciate that going down in advance. Obviously you don't have to do that, you can ask any question you want, while, but when we're up there at the mic turn.
Thank you.
It's, it's a touch feeling, you know, if you, if you haven't prepared for an answer, that's kind of way off what you, where we thought we were gonna go. If you don't surprise us that way. We won't surprise you and don't surprise us that way.
Nobody wants to be undercut in public. Yeah. And nobody wants to be chastised in public.
I would do that.
Yeah. So, yeah. So, so I think that, I think everybody has a clear understanding of that, and sometimes, uh, in that frustration that comes out and not knowing, I think, I think this will be fun when we talk about communications, 'cause that's, I think, all of our frustrations at the beginning, is where do we, how can we go, and what's, what's okay to do, and we're all trying to figure that out. One thing I wanted to add was, uh, complacency on the part of a, of a staff or a board, it can be a red flag, and, uh, when there are differences of opinions and when there's, uh, different points of view, sometimes there's a tendency to kind of withdraw or to come back. You need to have that healthy relationship, it's okay to have a difference of opinion, like you were talking earlier, but if, if you're ever a board, um, somebody feels hesitant to be able to voice that complacency sentiment, that can be a real...
Okay, any other thoughts?
I, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Can I bring you back on Ron's, uh, comment about customer service?
Jeff.
Certainly we have to worry about the individual, uh, not worry is wrong word, but be concerned with the, with the, uh, individual and his perspective. The balance that I always have to try to strike is, does customer service mean dealing with the one person in front of me or the fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine or not? So that is a balance, and how we approach that is always a matter of, uh, individual preference or individual style, but I'll tell you that there's not too many days, weeks certainly, but days that go by where we don't get an individual asking for us to do something for them. And sometimes the art is not in telling them yes, it's telling them no, but this is what we can do. Because almost every day, somebody's asking us to do something, but sometimes it is, is illegal. Clean up a tree on my lot, I pay my taxes. Well, that's public use and, or use of public money on private property, we clearly we shouldn't be doing it, it's illegal. How do you tell them no, still not make them mad, so they'll vote for your bond issue next time it comes up at the back?
I'm a city engineer, uh, kind of guy, you, uh, you get staked out a lot of times. You're the bad guy. You're one of the baddest guys in the city staff.
And, and the, and the fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, you don't really know what you're doing.
Yeah, right.
So it's, it's...
I'm, I'm tagging up to that too, is I think you have to really define who your market is, and I know you say customer, and I know it kind of reaches out to, you know, the people that live in the same town, but, you know, within every entity, there are multiple jobs, markets, and so whether it be developer, whether it be citizen, whether it be whoever, they're all your customers. And so it's defining that customer base too, and understanding that, and realizing you have to work with all of us to be your customers.
One other thing I've got up here is just to spare time. Um, I'm just gonna pick on Laura for a second, if it's okay with you. I, I don't know how you do your job some days, 'cause something like what we're going through right now. Um, I know that you guys are gonna get asked questions, I get asked questions from the folks in the public, and we wanna get an answer, and we wanna, we wanna demonstrate that we're being responsive, and so, I need an answer. But I can tell you that, like right now, in particular, I know that Laura's getting bombarded from about eighty-five different places. I don't know if I picked eighty-five, but... Eighty-five plus six, right? Plus seven, plus eight, plus nine, plus ten, right? Laura's getting bombarded in front of no, no less than a hundred people on a daily basis right now, and when you look for something, sometimes she's got to prioritize, Ron has to help her prioritize and say, "What's important?" Right? And we just have to respect what's going on. But in the city, it's not an enviable job. It's not easy because there's so many unreasonable demands, and people don't always have the context of everything that's going on. All that matters in their little world is their little problem, but there's sixteen thousand of them. They're all, they're all important.
The only thing I added to that is I think at some point it's just a, we got it, we're just busy on...
Set an expectation, I'll get back to you in a day, I'll get back to you in two days.
You don't hear anything for three days, so that, you just told me that, did I send it to the wrong email, I don't know.
Right.
And that, the person who asks you questions, like, "Why councilor doesn't hear you?" Versus just saying a sentence goes a long way.
Yeah. So we'll talk about communication again later on, but that's, I think that's just something, you know, if somebody says, "Hi, I'll call you Monday morning," and doesn't call you Monday morning. You know, that's a, that's an expectation that wasn't met, right?
Promise.
It was promised, it was broken, does that build trust or rebuild trust? Or is it just, you know, okay, I understand what's going on, so it was important, whatever. I think these are important things that we have, we all have these expectations of each other, and I think that we, um, councils certainly have to hold each other accountable to this. Right? And as, as Brian said, not make a public spectacle of anybody, even though we will be made, I learned ninety seconds in. We will be made public spectacles, but it doesn't matter if that person's educated or informed or just flat out wrong or what, there's a lot of other actions I can throw out, it doesn't matter, it is what it is, so we just have to deal with that, and we gotta, we gotta help each other, be strong as a, a council, frankly, is what I say. Okay, good? All right, not the last time I'm sure we're gonna have that conversation. All right, next agenda I might add on there, as I've kept it a secret, a discussion of, uh, I guess, I have a guest speaker coming in, he's standing right out there, what I know now that I wish I knew then. I thought it would be fun to bring in somebody from the past who's been an elected official, who has been through some tough stuff, somebody who has dealt with tough issues as city, as a city council person, somebody who's dealt with, um, conversation that we just had, like probably didn't go through that conversation when they were on council in the past. Um, this person's highly involved in the city, um, in a lot of different ways, and I've come to know this person over the last year, um, highly educated, respected, and a business person, and can maybe share with us some insights that might be helpful for especially the new guys on council, but I know I'm gonna learn something. I asked this person to come in and talk to us a little while back, and the only instructions I gave were, "Talk about whatever you want." I gave no instructions, I didn't say, "Talk about this and this and this, and I wanna make this point," um, and you can ask him if I said that at all. So, please come in, Mr. Bob Manning. Thanks for being willing to do this, by the way.
Oh, my pleasure, and my wife Linda's gonna help keep me up. I guarantee I won't get in trouble, so she can't keep me out of trouble. Mrs. Graff, I hope everyone rolled their windows up, I'm gonna talk. It's, it's been more than a mess up there, folks. It's, it's happened, I think that cemetery history tour probably gets canceled at the same time we're gonna schedule it, just schedule it. Um, so I heard the, heard the introduction, and I have a sense of, of the crowd here, Mrs. Graff, this, this is a lot of fun, and he said to me, "Have, have a lot of fun." His disclaimer's right, he has no clue what words I put on paper, what I'm fixing to say, so don't blame him, blame me. Um, little context for the people, I think a lot of folks here probably do know me and have cursed at me a lot, my hundreds of breath, it took my face, others done, so let me give you just a minute of context of who I am and why I'm standing here. I served on city council from two thousand five through two thousand eleven as an outgrowth of citizens uprising in the day, and it's called Burning Together. And it was formed over the specter of wait for it, a proposal loop around burning, and the perception of uncontrolled growth happening around us and coming our way. So we came together in an attempt to give the people who just live in this community an equal voice, equal place at the tail of those who make money here. And I know a lot of people who live here make money here, there's a whole bunch of people who make money in this town, their address is not here. So we're just trying to level with how you feel in the day. Uh, soon after we started, there arose another group called Burning Forward, and they thought of us as tricked out being socialists out to ruin the local economy, uh, which created anybody who was there in the day, and that's how, and why, say, the times were, they got me. Uh, I ran for city council two months into this time, was elected two months later, I remember even a dog catcher, it was on my bucket list of city council. I lost eight bunch of four one votes my first year, believe you may, uh, but a year later, we had two more votes elected of similar minds, and for two years, we enjoyed a slim three to two voting majority on the council, and a lot of you heard me say, count to three and you quit counting. Um, but after two years, we lost one of those members, after another year, we lost another, I lost a whole bunch more four one votes in my final years. Um, but my message to the council about that context is, we never had super majority, we never had a sympathetic mayor. Mayor Patrick Heath is an icon in this community, thank God he's got a library named after him, gotta have a statue, he never could get over our accusation of uncontrolled growth, he just couldn't get past it, and we, we could never work through it. So it's a real red line that he never embraced what we're trying to do, uh, because it felt like criticism. And we never really had particularly supportive senior city staff, polite to a fault, I'm sure they still are, but not really supportive of our causes. So our three to two majority was even that, it was pretty lovely at times, folks. Um, we did accomplish some great things, we lost some really big battles along, along the way. Um, so the mayor's invitation to address you guys today, if I only knew then what I know now, really has caused me to reflect a lot on what we did, what we could have done better, what we didn't do, what to say. Um, I don't wanna share that, I only have one request, saying straight to all the staff here. Please, please, Ron, Jeff, Mike, everybody, don't take any personal offense, I don't fix them to say, this is not intended to be insulting, I'm trying to offer remarks in a hope that this combination of council and staff can do a better job than we did. That simple. All right? If I only knew then what I know now, I would push hard for a session like you're having today, really, really do my tenure, to openly and candidly get clarity about the role of city council really is on a city manager, former of a governor. Uh, Ron, how long have you worked here? Thirty-eight years. Jeff? Twelve years here. Mike Manning?
Nineteen.
The city's, Laura?
Sixteen.
What about, huh?
Twenty-nine.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. You get the point. City staff, senior city staff in Burning is very experienced, uh, won't say old, uh, long-serving, and candidly committed to a certain approach to growth management, it's just, it in the genetic code of what the history of the town has come to be, but their job of running the city is big and it's busy, and because of their work, our town runs extremely well on a routine basis, our finances, financial standing is terrific, we have twenty-four-hour fire protections, police departments, well, staff with people and equipment, uh, the departments that look after streets, parks, electric systems, gas systems and the rest are just simply outstanding. So why don't you, council, just help staff continue to maintain the status quo, this is really pretty dang good. Well, maybe, because like fifteen years ago, someone could run through this office to make a difference, a difference in how we manage growth, a difference of how we protect and enhance the quality of life for people who are here. Our town does have inertia in a general direction of growth management that you may or you may not support. But candidly, you know, you're volunteers, you lost your sanity for a short period of time. You got elected, and you're in the suit for a little while. But none of you are gonna serve, as well as the numbers you just heard voiced by staff on how long they've been here. You know that, they know that, and you need clarity about how your respective roles are gonna interact, and how do you get things done? For example, specifically and procedurally, how do you take those ideas that inspired you to serve on a council and drive them to reality? Remember, staff will be bringing you long agendas, full of important items demanding your attention, your action, but nevertheless, agendas that you have very little things created. So it can be daunting to figure out when and how you can proactively add something on the council agenda rather than reacting to what comes your way, much less how you can ever make a real shift in direction. But if you have notions significantly changing any outcomes, then you're signing up to be a disruptor, even if you're calling professional and your style is a homing. To succeed in driving any fundamental change, a majority of this council needs to share vision on what to change, parenthetically with how I'm in the Texas open, who's that? Please take that more serious than I did. I'm a little closer to the Texas Rangers than I ever really wanted to get. You need a deep conviction on the value of your causes, open minds about the facts, and the strength, you need the strength to withstand attacks on you. They will come, if you've already gotten your fresh taste of it, get used to it. But ultimately, the question that must be answered is, who sets the direction of burning and how does it really get applied? If I only knew then what I know now, I would pay much closer attention to annual budgeting. Uh, if you're still doing the process this family is before, pretty soon you guys on council are gonna be getting draft budgets up to the city staff from various departments. These budgets are long, they're detailed, they're real, and they're really hard to decipher. What do they mean, how do they fit together, which items are most important? Could feel like drinking from a fire, who doesn't pick up, never tried that. Um, but what can get lost in that budgeting process is your opportunity to read the right bunch of priorities in a well-communicable base, because the vast majority of what you're looking at are funds that go towards maintaining those services that are already excellent. So if you got something that's not broken, why? Because the vast majority of what you're looking at are funds that go towards maintaining those services that are already excellent. So if you've got something that's not broken, why, great. So while your opportunities to redirect budgeting and budgeting are limited, actually to exist, I'll give a tiny example of something I didn't do. During my tenure, we passed a supposed dark sky lighting ordinance and amended the tree where Mr. Reynolds. Pretty proud of it all the time. It never occurred to me that during the next annual budget cycle, stop my foot and count on the desk and bag and plead and demand that they had compliance staff to make these ordinances enforced. So as a result, anybody who drives around town would never believe we have dark sky lighting ordinance because it's ignored routinely. We had commercial tree tremors, residential tree tremors running all over our town, whacked and blocked up trees, leaving open wounds with emptyity. There's, and I want to be clear, our code compliance department stacked with professionals. They're responsive, they're smart, they're dedicated. They appear to be extremely busy with new development, which demands on their company. So they have the time to turn around, drive around county night, see if whose lights don't have shields on them, or who drive around and listen for chainsaws and see if people are spraying the wings. But you, as a council, could say you need to redirect some human resources to do that if you think it's important. My point here being, council, if you're going to propose any enlightened new ordinances, then contemplate how they're going to be implemented or else they're in fact. Well, that's where you're wasting your time. If I only knew then what I know now, I would find a way to have city staff and city budget facilitate the establishment of active neighborhood associations throughout our town. A single initiative would go a long way for solving seemingly perpetual unsolvable dilemma problems with poor participation by the citizenry. And every association could have a couple of people who cared, who stayed in touch with the agenda, who stayed in touch with their city councilmen. And then they just turn around and alert their neighbors to turn out participation. It's a real matter of course. The same vehicle would be used to dramatically increase public participation. Such initiatives, master plan updates, work trails, sidewalks updates, transportation studies, et cetera, et cetera. Ultimately, engaged citizens are not pests and are not their enemies. They are the stingy. This would be a really good way. I wish we had done it in my day. If I only knew then what I know now, I would find a way to create time on council agendas or workshop agendas for pure education by outside experts on a range of issues affecting our community or that you may need to do in the future. You have no personal staff to educate you on these issues, but you still need to vote from a position of knowledge. Currently, council agendas are packed, time is limited, education is primarily restricted to staff presentations on specific agenda items that you see almost 72 hours ahead of time. But experts on all signs of issues who are bound in our community are willing and able to bring facts and real world lessons to you if they're just invited. Couple of quick examples. Paul Barwick here. Paul Barwick in 2008 initiated a process, then chaired by Paul here, who had been at him, probably knows where he at. And it involved the American Institute of Architects, and it brought to our town national leaders, planners, and visionaries to create a document called Bernie by Design, focused on what we know as the three Cs. Central business district, civic campus, and the civil law crew. It was huge hovey participation. It was unbelievable how many people came out and participated in this. The document deserves to remain top line to everybody here. If you haven't seen it, you can look at my copy for a minute. I want it back because I'm not sure how many there are left. But it's wonderful body of work. There's no reason for the sit on the shelf collecting dust and you guys figure out how to reinvent that wheel. That was amazing work. I know it's being referred to and partly implemented, but it is really a visionary piece of work. It's such high quality that only deserves your time. On a not-so-upbeat note, there was another, a year later, another pretty impressive, very impressive body of work done by the University of Texas, San Antonio, led by the internationally-renowned Dr. William Pott, now professor of historic preservation. They came to our town at no cost, inventory historic structures in our historic district, inventory historic structures not in our historic district, and laid out a roadmap for how to protect the ones in the district and how to expand those protections to those not outside the district. And because that involved expanding the district, it fell into the chasm of the divisive times that I saw. There was a march on city hall. There was accusations of communism, property rights were at risk. People were going to be told what color they could paint their buildings. This body of work is what I see. And it is absolutely suitable for writing. It's a wonderful resource for you still. A lot of some of the buildings in here no longer exist because the protection is more expanded, some do. It's ripe for education. Teach you guys, move for action. Here's the name of that one? Paul? Historic District Survey for the City of Bernie. I don't see.
Does the city have a copy of that?
We have it too.
Is it available online?
Root at it. I was just going to point that out. Council's looking for it. Just put in the search box, Bernie by Design, and it comes up. What was the other one? I'll look it up.
January 2009 Historic District Survey.
It should also be in your IAN table when you're on text.
Yeah. For your documents.
It may have been purged from all city records.
No, no, we still use it for annuals.
It was a, it was a very, very low, low point in our civil discourse in this town. The way we trade the doors, it was embarrassing. But it was real. If I only knew then what I know now, I would dig very deep into the current notion of operating each city on utilities, such as electric, water, gas, the profit centers. But I know operative terms, not profit, but fund balance, but the effect is the same. I'm an energy guy. That's what I did for a living, man, in this career. It's what I'm doing part-time as a consultant now. And the character of a town like Bernie is that we own our utilities, but we don't generate our utilities. We don't be generating plants, we don't own gas wells. We buy this stuff wholesale. We market up a little bit to cover our internal costs and to create a fund balance. And then turn around and set rates and sell it to our local taxpayers. Well, the math works. The cash flow makes sense. But each department is expected to bring in more than expense in order to create the fund balance. Creates fund balance. Three months at one time was the benchmark of, that makes it good. You go around three months, maybe you can help pay for a city hall ultimately. The problem is it creates zero financial incentive for us as a city to encourage any minority symbol of conservation or efficiency in our community. Because look at the arithmetic table. You're using less electricity, you're paying a smaller bill, and you reduce your revenue to the departments we're managing. And if we're managing as PML centers, that's a bad thing. So we got, we sit around and ask some really odd questions about celebrating droughts and celebrating hot weather and this, that, and the other. It's good finances. Well, it's tough out there and we all know it is. And our rate tiers really need something better. I wish we had done a deep dive into other possibilities. I don't, you know, Ron's another career utility guy. There are other ones and I don't know what it would take for it to make sense, maybe a more global view of utilities, and they don't all have to be profitable all the coming. But we just never got past the fact that, you know, big cities want to conserve energies. They don't have to build them in their town. It's like 300 million dollars' expense to get it to avoid. If all you do is buy and wholesale, market and sell in retail, that incentive doesn't exist. It's a tougher, not too crowded point. It would help. My last item, I took delivery of renaming. And it's, when I look back now on what I did then, when I announced after six years on council that I would not seek a fourth term, I received over 100 emails. Emails from people that live in this community, many who live in the city limits, many who live outside of our city limits. And they thanked me for what I'd done successfully. And they thanked me for what I tried to do. Those messages come from the same sorts of people whose quality of life depends in some measure on decisions that this council either will or will not make on their behalf. Their thanks will always remain my last reward for having served on city council. And I wouldn't trade anything for it. So strike for similar feedback when you're ready to hang that up. I could carry on. I doubt I'd get myself into more trouble than I probably already have. And hopefully this list gives you a few things to ponder. Couple of parting remarks. Our city is very well-run, but it may be time for some bold new initiatives to implement the vision and values that are captured in our master plan. This council may, may have a majority of like-minded voters. You may have a sympathetic mayor. And you may have senior staff ready to listen. In other words, this may be a council or staff relationship that can produce unprecedented good for the Bernie community. And I have all of us, please make it so. Thank you.
Thanks for doing that. You're not talking with my brother, by the way. Do you guys have questions about? I know some of you know Bob a lot, but any questions that you guys want to ask or clarifications? Council members? No?
I've talked about every kind of choose a bump or good information. And say goodbye.
I find, and I've talked to many of the past council members, I don't care about what happens. I don't care about, this Texas Ranger story, it was a fascinating while I'm here, those stories. But what I find is the past is instructive. I don't look at the past to be critical of it. I look at the past as I wish I could have changed something. Because our job is to go forward, right? But I find the past instructive and I learned from what Bob and Bob and Lynn have frankly, what you guys have educated me on, you know, we can learn what things that didn't work in the past and we can say, how do we make things better? We can learn how the essence or the fabric of the community pays attention to everything that we do. We can learn how to communicate better with them. I think that's important. So I love talking and hearing the stories of the past. I don't, I don't find, it's not a political game for me. It's more of a, hey, you have wisdom because you've been through it. And I think we need to get that wisdom and harness it in term council. So thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
All right. So logistically, as Bob's leaving, we didn't schedule breaks. Can you take a break? Take a break. I'm going to have like a 15-minute break. It takes a half an hour to wrap everybody back up. So we're going to keep charging on. The next agenda I then have, Paul is going to give us all the fun facts of the law and what we can and can't do. The official agenda item is.
I'm leaving.
We did, we did, and I won't say okay 100 times. One of the TML attorneys that was presenting on the Open Meetings Act, you were elected official's conference. Quite a way of presenting that just, slight nails on a trigger. Anyway, okay, so we're going to talk about the Texas Open Meetings Act and the Public Information Act. Many people think they're the same thing. They are not. They are two separate sections of the Texas government code. The Open Meetings Act is specific to elected and appointed officials who are members of government bodies. You have a handout that I'm basically going through with you. You can keep it for your information. It's a, it's a short summary of what it applies to. The Open Meetings Act and the Texas Public Information Act are hundreds of pages. So feel free to read them on your own time. I will not be reading them to you today, but you will be required, the elected officials in the room, to take the training within the first 90 days and take it to office. So from May 14th, okay, good. Very good. And then you get your certificate, you give it to our city secretary, Lori, and she keeps it in your file. You should also keep one for yourself. If you are ever questioned, if you took it, then we have it or she'll have it for you. But you're required to complete the course because the main thing now is you're not only a citizen of Bernie, you're not, you know, an advocate for Bernie, you are a city government official of Bernie. So you have to kind of change your way of thinking into you're here for the city as a whole. You're here for your district, but you're here for the city as a whole. And once you start thinking about, ooh, I'm making decisions as a city government official, now you see these Open Meetings Act and the Open Meetings Act and how it applies to you and what you do. And the reason for that, and the reason that we can't just necessarily read an agenda item summary, walk in, say agenda item one, vote, because the Open Meetings Act wants to ensure that the government entity is making decisions and showing how the decisions are made in a public way. So the public doesn't want to just find out what the decision was. They want to see how the decision was made. They see that through discussion that happens under an open meeting. And so on your, on your paper there, it talks about how the Supreme Court ruled that the Open Meetings Act breadth is consistent with the recognition of Richard Wilson. That government, that quote, government ought to be all outside and not inside. Our citizens are entitled to more than a result. They are entitled to not only what the government decides, but also to observe how and why every decision was reached. That's why we have to post notice of meetings. The Texas Open Meeting Act requires 72 hours' notice minimum of a regular meeting unless there's some sort of necessity, an emergency. If there's flooding and we need funding to get aid for that, we could hold a meeting within two hours' notice. But normal meetings, we have to post 72 hours' notice. And in that posting, we have to tell them what's going to be talked about at the meeting. And that's, so they can make the decision as to whether it affects them personally and they want to be there to comment on it, or they want to be there to see what the discussion is or what the decision is. So we have to tell them what we're talking about. We have to talk about it in front of them and we have to decide in front of them. And that's when you get into what does a meeting mean? It's a deliberation of a quorum of the government body. In our situation, our charter says a quorum is three, and that includes the mayor. So for a while, we had Nina, and we had the mayor, and we had Ty and Tim. And when Tim couldn't show, or Nina couldn't show, we had the three, and the mayor was included in our quorum in order to vote. So you had two council members vote. They voted one and one, mayor broke, you know, the tie. So we, as per our charter, three is a quorum and that includes the mayor. So, and I say that because that's different other places. General law cities, the mayor doesn't count towards a quorum. You have to have a quorum of four to have a special meeting, and you have to have a quorum of three council members to have a regular meeting. So in general law cities, not home rule, not by our charter, but in other cities, people are used to seeing the mayor doesn't count towards the quorum. You got to have four people there, council members, to even hold a special meeting. there, council members, to even hold a special meeting. And you gotta have three to hold your regular meeting. The mayor's just there and only votes in a tie. He officiates the meeting, but doesn't count towards the quorum. We're different here. So with that in mind, we go forward that two of you plus the mayor equals a quorum when we're talking about what is a meeting. So when we're talking about meetings, we're talking about a gathering conducted by the governmental body, or which the governmental body is responsible for holding, and which public business or public policy that the governmental body has supervision or control over is gonna be discussed or considered. Or during that time, the governmental body's gonna take formal action. So not just, oh, we're not gonna take action. No, but you're gonna discuss something that is public business or public policy, and you're gonna consider it. Even if you don't take action, that's still considered a meeting. You don't have to take action for it to be a meeting. But if you're bringing something together with three of you, that is gonna be something that's public business or a public concern, over which this governmental entity can have jurisdiction and set policy, you are discussing it or considering it, that's a meeting, and we need to post it. So that the public can say, oh, these three are discussing that, I want to hear what they're discussing. So that's why we have to get into the specifics, and that's why we have to know what it is you want to talk about. If you're gonna have more than one of you there, oh, you're gonna have a town hall? Are you gonna have other council members there? Because we're required, and staff is required by law, to make sure we're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So if you're gonna have a town hall, and one more of you comes, fine. Two more of you, no. Unless we're gonna post it as a public meeting with an agenda of topics that you will stick to, you have to be careful in what you're doing, what you're posting. And we will ask questions, and you may think, well, why are you asking? Because we are required to ask, because we're required to make sure that not only you are complying with the law, but that the city is complying with the law. Because why? Because if you don't, there are criminal penalties as well as civil penalties for violating the Open Meetings Act. Thus, the Texas Rangers. Somebody comes and reports it, and you have a Texas Ranger knocking on your door. Or at City Hall saying, hey, you know that town hall you had? Well, there was three of you guys there, and somebody reported you. And why is that? Why would somebody do that? Because there's six of you, and they know where you are. You were on the front page of the paper last week. You're gonna go into H E B, and they're gonna come up to you and talk about city business. They're gonna go, you're gonna go to Walmart, they're gonna wanna talk to you about city business. You are no longer anonymous. You are no longer a citizen, a constituent, a regular person. You are a city official. Just the same as Mr. Walton being the city manager and myself being the city attorney, you lead city when it comes to the law. So that means you have to always in the back of your mind, know what the Open Meetings Act requires of you, and know what the Public Information Act requires of you. Because if not, it's not those people that are talking to you that get in trouble, it's you or the city staff that can stop you from getting yourself in trouble. And so it's, it's a big deal, but it's the way that our government operates successfully. And the reason we're not a dictatorship, and the reason we're no longer in England to make decisions without anybody's input, the reason when people got out of the boat and came across the ocean, so that we could have open government. And that's not to say they get to get up and comment on every single thing that you're deciding on, but they get to hear your discussion, and they get to hear your decisions. Because they not only elected you, you're accountable to them, but now you're accountable for all the laws that apply to you and your position into the city.
Can I just add about for a second? Nina has educated me a couple of times on this. She educates everybody on this, but the most commonplace that this happens, when you don't think about it, is after a council meeting, when you're walking out, you want to talk, and there's two of you or three of you. Bam! You just violated the law. Nina reminds us every single time. She's the best watch talker, I don't have to teach her to talk again. And thanks for teaching me that over, because it's happened a couple of times, and you think, oh, we're just chit-chatting after a council meeting. That is the most dangerous time of all, when you're gonna violate this. Unknowingly, unwittingly, right?
Because most often, the city council members will not be in the same place at the same time unless it's planned. I mean, you're not all gonna be in the same aisle at H E B. You're not all gonna be there talking about shoreline park, you know, you're not all gonna be there, you know, picking up your loaf of bread, and, you know, that's rare. That is rare. You may be at Ty's restaurant, and Ty's there because he works there, and two of you are there separately. Well, if you're all at separate tables, fine, you're fine. You're all at the same table, you better not be talking about city business. And even if you're not, it looks bad. It looks bad, because somebody's gonna call and say, hey, I saw the mayor and one of those doctors at Ty's place, and they were all talking to him, and he was standing at their table. They were there for thirteen and a half minutes. And they're gonna do it, it's gonna happen. And you have to be able to say, he was showing us pictures of his kids, we didn't talk about anything. There'll be a complaint, there'll be an investigation. Hopefully the Texas Rangers don't know. But that's, that's the reality of it sadly, is because people don't want backdoor deals being what rules their government decisions.
And their check.
Yes.
The best way it was ever presented to me was if you walk in to anything, a meeting or town hall or candidate forum or anything that's Lori has not posted, and you see two, the mayor or a council member or two council members, don't stay, just turn around and walk out, and you will avoid a lot of heartburn over...
Are you talking about online open meetings? What could be constituted a meeting online?
Yes, yes. So, that is a very good point. If you're the last one in, you're the first one out, sorry. Unless, unless you all know you're going. If you all know that there's a town hall being held on, Commissioner Jordan is holding the town hall on the roadway mobility issues, May twenty-eighth. We have our council meeting, so the likelihood of y'all being there is not good. But if you're going right after the council meeting, we need to tell Lori, she needs to post a notice of a possible quorum attendance at this event. That doesn't mean that you're gonna deliberate a public concern at the city and make a decision. It means that we're telling the public, we're gonna have a quorum of our members at this, and no business will be discussed.
What about other government meetings, like the commissioner's court?
Exactly the same. So if three of y'all are gonna attend the commissioner's court meeting to see what they're deciding on something, then she needs to know, because we need to post notice of a possible quorum. That way, we can say, well, we posted this notice, we put it on our website, we put it on our front door, and we knew that they were going, and they're not making any decisions, but we wanted you to know, we posted this notice, we complied with the Open Meetings Act. Then you can know, but we just need to know so that we can make sure we comply with the requirements.
Molly, we've posted notice, that also means the city secretary has to attend, because she's the one that's going to have to protest. She took no business, no action, no motions. So if we post a meeting, staff's gotta be there, somebody, yep.
So can you advise you're going after the advisor instead?
Well, yeah, the advisor, yeah.
And then don't show up.
Oh, that's...
That is the worst.
That, you're gonna get called out because you're not respecting Ty.
Right.
There you go.
Yes. Because she shows up, and you think, ah, I've got something to do, so I'm not gonna go. You've just wasted hours of your time.
So if you're sure you're going, we have to, we have to post a notice of a quorum, we've gotta post a notice of a quorum, we've gotta put it on the website, we've gotta have staff in there, so that we can say, oh, they didn't, they sat there, they listened. And that's not to deter you. That's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. Or if you want us to send a staff member, we send a staff member. That doesn't require a notice of a, posting for a staff member, just officials, government officials that will be making decisions eventually about something that could reasonably come in front of them at some point within the jurisdiction this year. Okay, so page two, let's talk about what deliberation means. Well, we've already talked about workshops, social functions. Social functions unrelated to business are fine, but we need to know who's going. Attendance at a forum of a governmental, regional, state, national workshop or convention, ceremonial event, press conference, those are fine, because there's no formal action, discussion of business is not being taken place unless it's incidental, and then it's not a forum of you discussing it together. So some of, some of those things are okay. Deliberation means a verbal exchange during a meeting of a quorum of the body, considering an issue within the jurisdiction of the governmental body or any public business. So we're talking about, sometimes they say, well, it was just an informal discussion. That defense is not effective to the Open Meetings Act. An informal discussion with three members of a governmental body in this, in this location would be considered deliberation. Even an, even an informal discussion is not the defense. So there's a pending issue within the jurisdiction, and you want to have some sort of meeting where you can all discuss it. We have a retreat, or we have a workshop. So sometimes we'll have a workshop before council meeting to inform you of what's going on with a certain development, a certain contract, a certain utility issue. That's when we'll inform you all, you can have your discussion. Even if you make no decision at the workshop, you can, it's a back and forth that you can answer, answer and receive answers to questions. And the public can attend and hear what you're talking about. So walking, okay, so it doesn't have to be verbal communication only anymore. Now it can be written communication. So if you attempt to have an agreement on any matter of public concern outside of a public meeting, so you post on Facebook an issue that's coming before council, or that's within the city's jurisdiction, and you say on your Facebook post, hey, Quentin, what do you think about this issue for your district? And Quentin comments back and says, I think I agree with you. We need to do something about this. What do you think? Dr. Macaluso and Dr. Macaluso says, um, well, I'm undecided at this point. Okay? But now y'all are all talking on the same topic that's coming before council, on the same Facebook page, in a public meet, in a public forum, and there's three of you. So what have you done? Violated the Open Meetings Act. Because the rest of the people that are on Facebook, what if I'm on Instagram and I'm not on Facebook, but I would have wanted to know about that conversation? Well, they didn't post that notice, there's no agenda, so I'm calling the Texas Rangers. Because you know what? You just violated the Open Meetings Act by all talking about the same thing on the same Facebook page.
What about viking of the state, anyway?
Yeah, let's not do that either. Yeah, it's the same concept. You're kind of showing favor or disliking it. You're showing, nah, I'm not gonna vote for that. I mean, anything that's gonna give an indication, there's, there's actually an example of Snapchat. So one council member Snapchats another member, and it's the, it's the Snapchat of the agenda item on a public hearing on zoning, and says, vote no, send it to the other council member. Fine, we got two people. That council member Snapchats it to another one. Now we got three, now we got a problem. Because you've, even though it's disappeared, it's never really gone. I bet you Mike, that I would keep it back.
One, one thing I also like to say is, the city, social media pages, Instagram, Facebook, they're all archived. If you were gonna set up an, an online Facebook page, social media page, that puts you as a city official, archive everything you have, because in a public request for information, if you deleted that item, if you've taken it off, you have to keep that two years plus term.
It is subject to the Public Information Act, even though it's your personal Facebook page and you're staying in city council. After that, I think you have one. It's not personal, and it is open to the Public Information Act, so anyone can come in and say, I wanna see the thread, I wanna see everything that you posted.
If you say Dr. Macaluso, or if you say Joe Macaluso, Dr. Joe Macaluso, and it's just your friends and family, and you post pictures of your kids and your grandkids, fine. If you say, I am Dr. Macaluso, place five, city councilperson, Bernie, Texas, that is a public forum, there is back and forth on whether you can delete comments that you find offensive, because there's, there's a difference in rulings. One state says it's your right because you can, one says, okay, is it a limited public forum, a open public forum, or a private public forum? All of that is important in the legal realm of constitutional First Amendment speech. What you're allowed to delete and what you're required to maintain. It's all in how you set it up, all in how you put the rules of your page. If there's any offensive blah blah blah, vulgarity, I shall delete it, maybe okay. But if you delete the whole comment, and it's negative or opposition as to what you think or what the rest of the people think, that person can have an issue that you're censoring them, that you're using censorship against their First Amendment right on your public page that you put out there. So that's what the city has to be careful with. If we have a website, we have a Facebook page, we have Twitter, we have Next Door, we have all of these pages, and if people put things on there that clearly violate the terms of our page, we may be okay. But if they're just putting opposing comments to what we want the page to, you know, portray, we can't necessarily delete what they're saying, because then we could be accused of censorship and violating their First Amendment rights. So when you put yourself out there like that, you have to understand, you can't just get mad and delete something. And if you do delete it, yep, they keep it for two years, because it's a Public Information Act document. Even though it's not a physical piece of paper, the Public Information Act covers communications that are created by any source of media. So it could be text messages, it could be your emails, it could be your webpage, it could be your Facebook page, Instagram, Twitter. All of that stuff has to be maintained for a two-year period from the day it was deleted or posted, because somebody can come in and do a Public Information Act and say, I want everything in writing from Dr. Fowler on Kindle Gateway. Everything he's posted, everything he's texted, everything he's emailed, everything city staff has emailed him, everything, in his official capacity. Okay, so now we have to go, Lori's our Public Information Officer, she gets the Public Information request, and we look at it, and we say, yeah, we gotta comply with this. And she calls you and says, hey, I need all your Facebook posts, I need anything with this, this terminology, you gotta do a search, you gotta get it to us. Because you're a public official now. And so you're required to follow the laws, if you're gonna create a page like that, that the city has to follow for our official pages like that. So that's why they say a lot of times, if you want to have some sort of discussion amongst each other, you could create a city message board where the topic is posted, and the city staff member says, I'm Jeff Thompson, deputy, city manager, director of utilities, and we want to create a stormwater utility. Here's the message board. This is what it's gonna be, these are the fees. Give input. And Dr. Fowler comments on there, and Mayor Pandran comments on there, and then Lori, Laura Tally gets in there and says something, I'm Laura Tally, city staff, planning department. This is great, because we have lots of impervious cover bubble, it's all open. No decisions are being made. It's an official messaging board, and that's all retained, and it's all open to the Public Information Act. And you can comment, you can't make decisions, you can't say how you vote. That's a big thing, is you can't try and gain consensus to something. So, a couple of months back, the Texas Supreme Court ruled on the Open Meetings Act that it's a walking quorum. Walking quorum has always meant, the act applies to groups less than a quorum that were, less than a quorum, that were a quorum or were attempted to avoid the purpose of the act by deliberately meeting in groups less than a quorum, co-sessions to discuss or deliberate public business, and then ratifying their actions in a forum in a subsequent meeting. So there was a commissioner's court somewhere, and I believe a county judge or one of the commissioners went person to person and sat down, had meetings with them on a project, a development project, and said, I really want to get your support on this before we vote. Went person to person, gave them all the same information, got consensus, they put it on the agenda, and they voted. And the public found out, filed a lawsuit, goes to the Texas Supreme Court, and the Texas Supreme Court says, well, I don't know if that's criminal, because we don't know what his intent was, but if we did, it's vague, and so y'all need to fix your law. law." But it's bad, shouldn't have done that. But we're not going to say it's criminal. So now, in the legislature, we have Senate Bill 1640, which is passing, and should be signed by the governor, which fixes the law that the Texas Supreme Court said, "Well, shouldn't have done that, but we don't know if it's criminal, because it's not divine property." And so if you want to make it unconstitutional and make it criminal, then you need to redefine it. So they have, they've given us a whole new definition, which is called a prohibited series of communications. And it means that you knowingly engage in one of a series of communications about an issue in front of your jurisdiction. And with the possibility, and you knew that you weren't the only two talking about it, that he was going to go to him, and he was going to go to him, and it was going to him. So you knew that you participated in a prohibited series of communications. And so it's basically the same thing, but now it's called something else, and it's still criminal. You cannot have closed-door meetings to gain consensus on an issue that's going to come before you, or that is before you, and you've come in public, put it on the agenda, and vote. Back to the very first thing. They want to see how the sausage is made, so to speak. I mean, they may not want to see the whole process, it can be ugly in an open meeting, back and forth, members arguing a point that they all have adamant beliefs about, but that's what the public gets to see, according to the Open Meetings Act. So, going backdoor route is not going to work. It would be criminal, still, once this bill is on, it's still illegal. So, okay, let's talk about technology. You could, we talked about that, unintentionally violating the Open Meetings Act. We're talking about the content. So we send you an email to all city council, quicker than it's easier, and we put a little verbiage about, "Don't hit 'reply to all.'" Such a communication could be considered a violation, if you reply to all. So if we send you an agenda item, and we say, "Here's the agenda summary on this item, it has some errors in it, and we are updating you for your meeting next Tuesday." And it's a different agenda item summary, and you reply back, "Well, this doesn't answer my question, I'm still against it." Okay, let's not do that. We've not done that, and I think most people know not to do that, but it can be something as simple as that, like, "Yeah, this didn't answer my question, you need to do a little bit more work, give me some more answers, but I'm still not voting for it." I mean, it's become a deliberation in an email about an item on an agenda, and there's a quorum present, because you're all on the email. You don't have to be physically present, you can be present by the email, by the Facebook, by the text, by the Twitter, Instagram. Okay, so the purpose for that, we talked about microblogs, Twitter, social media websites, Facebook, these have all raised new issues for the Attorney General. So, I can't tell you, there's an Attorney General opinion, and it is blah 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 blah, number, go read it, it'll tell you everything you need to know about social media. Well, because there's stuff coming in, and there's not necessarily Attorney General rulings on all of this, because a lot of it is new. But most of the social media rules can be covered by saying, "It's anything that's deliberation between a quorum of the body about a public issue that could come before the jurisdiction of your governmental body, and you're discussing it." And there's a quorum, and you're deliberating. So, that's the key to keep in mind when you're posting.
One thing I know we discussed over and over and over again, that you may not even realize, is these groups that have Facebook pages, it's best, I've deleted them, I don't... If you, because if there's a topic on one of these groups' Facebook pages, and Ty reads something and says, "Oh, I've got it all wrong, I'm going to set them straight," and then Dr. Fowler says, "Oh yeah, I..." And then one more, you've created various other things. So I've just made it happen, not to comment on any...
I was going to say, you mentioned liking. I told him, on those pages, I don't like, I don't say anything anymore. Okay, I liked it, that's it. I don't, so don't, if you tell me you got married, you got a baby, I might, any personal thing, I might like that. But that's about it, at this point.
That you can fall into that group chat, and not even realize even. So it's just best.
And you can really want to set them straight, because you have more information than they do.
Well, it's okay if one person about a topic has the opinion, if you as another public official see that.
But you may not see it.
But you may not see it.
That's the problem.
That's the problem. You need to make sure you're commenting, even if everybody else has it already.
You want to immediately see the faces, you want to go to a Facebook page.
You don't have to.
Because if two people comment, and one person's liked it, that's cool. Two people liked it, and then you comment, because you don't see their likes, you don't pay attention to the like, or dislike, that's cool.
Yeah, I think it's possible to see that, if you do want to, so it's dangerous to say it, not say anything, and that'll serve as that for you.
Better not to do it, and let them share from your Facebook page.
You can go on your own page, "This is the information, I am blah blah blah." And then that way, you're not necessarily commenting on somebody else's post, going directly to what they're saying, liking what they're saying. You're getting the facts out there, in your way, and it's an official post that you can then retain, that you, "This is what I said. This is all I did."
I had a long conversation with her about this, because I, you, Tim and I talked about the very issue, I was concerned about this issue. The odd line is that you can put what you want on your official page, and they can copy, because it's public, they can copy and paste anywhere they want. But that's where you should limit anything to do with the city.
And you need to watch that you follow.
And you got, well, yeah.
Because if other council people are following your Facebook page, and somebody hasn't liked...
Yeah.
Don't follow my page.
I mean, it's open, so you can read what's on there. But, yeah, definitely can't be commenting back and forth on each other's page. Yeah, that's a good statement.
Sadly, and Joe and I had this conversation when we went, and we were battling each other for District 5, even before we went to election, I said, "Whoever gets voted in loses their voice." Right? To an extent, you lose your ability to talk openly and freely at all times. Because now you're in a position that has a higher standard, and has standards that's required to be open in public. It is what it is. So my question to you all is, we have 30 minutes to decide for your section, and you're 40 minutes in, you're only two second topic.
I'm running 40 minutes.
Yeah, you're running time clock. I'm just making you aware of the time.
So Manny can open.
I'm just making you aware of the time.
So let's talk about open session. So, open session versus closed session. We know that we have to have a quorum to start a council meeting, we have to have that quorum to go into an executive session. Executive session is only closed session items that are part of the act, which you know, consultation with attorney, if we're talking about buying property, personnel matters, economic development. We have certain topics that the act allows us to talk on in executive session, but not make decisions on. Any vote still has to come out and be in the public, because the public has a right to see the decision that you make. Violations of the act are right there for you to read. The Texas Public Information Act does not necessarily mean the squeaky wheel against the oil. The squeaky wheel has to follow the process to get the oil. So they have to submit in writing to Lori a request for something from the city, and then the city has to gather it. We have 10 days to respond to their request, we're supposed to respond promptly. So if it's somebody, you know, if it's a 911 run sheet, and there's no criminal case associated with it, then the police department knows, they release it, or they tell Lori about this request, or they're going to release it, and they may get it the next day. If there's a criminal case involved, and they want a whole, you know, copy of the murder investigation file, well, no. Now we're going to ask the Attorney General to say they cannot have it. So the same with you. If there's something confidential by law, if there's something ongoing with a city matter, economic development, there are certain exceptions that we can claim, but the Attorney General has to tell us, yes, that's valid, you don't have to release it. So a lot of times, you're going to have constituents come to you and say, "Hey, can you give me a copy of that, whatever it is, that stormwater utility study that y'all did?" Well, we haven't finished with our stormwater utility, and we're still in the process of drafting our organs, which would be legislation. And so there is an exception that says, "We get away until our process is complete." You don't get that study until we're done creating our legislation. And you can see how we got there, but you don't get it now. And so we can ask the Attorney General to say, "Yeah, don't give it to them." But we don't make that decision internally. The Attorney General makes that decision. If we're claiming an exception, they say, "Yeah, you're right." And we have to send them the information. So they ask for a confidential, they ask for copies of your emails. And you say, "Why do you have to get those, why can't you just claim an exception?" Well, in order to claim the exception, what exception is it? I got to look at it. Number two, I got to send them to the Attorney General, because they get to say, "Yes, these emails are accepted." They get the sample. The person doesn't get them until they're released or not. But they get, the Attorney General gets a sampling, or all of the documents that we're claiming are not to be released. So even if we claim, we have an exception, and we can't release that murder file, they have to start making copies of the murder file, and we have to send the entire murder file off to the Attorney General's office, and they get to review it and say, "Yes, all of this is accepted," or "No, this page, release this," they'll redact it, they make the determination. And that usually takes 45 or 55 days for them to get back to us.
We have to send it to the Attorney General, or they may take it for themselves.
Right. So, you don't have to necessarily take the Texas Public Information Act training, because Lori's our Public Information Act officer, and so she is required to take it on your behalf, but I would recommend, if you have an hour of time, just do it. It's the education on that that's important, not the certificate. To get that education...
It is a requirement.
It is a requirement, okay. Because some of them say, if you have a public information officer, that person takes it on your behalf.
If I may comment? Council, you're very new at this, but we get public information requests almost daily. And sometimes, those requests are, I think the one that I dealt with, which is the largest one, was I went the last three years, all emailed from the city manager, on down to the council, including staff, and that would cost that gentleman overwhelmingly $3,000.
Was that the Gateway email question?
It was. But it does happen, so don't think, "Well, it's a little girl in Texas, I know she's talking about murder cases." Nope. People get riled up about different things, and they want to see what you've been talking about. It doesn't necessarily mean they have to identify a subject. Any and all email is what the request was. And it was very, very time consuming, and it can happen.
And we have to gather it in order to know if there's an exception, or what exceptions apply to the information they're requesting, because we have to review that. Okay, so, there are criminal and civil penalties. What's the civil penalty of violating the Open Meetings Act? That the action you took is voidable. So somebody could file an injunction in district court and say, "You decided not to item, and you didn't properly post it, and so now we want to undo that." And it'll be undone. If you violate the Open Meetings Act as a group, the decision you made will be voided. Now, Public Information Act, what's the violation? Well, it's criminal, it could also be civil, you could be brought up with a civil suit for removal for official misconduct. So, you don't turn over what you have, you can illegally destroy, or mutilate, or remove without permission, any type of documents that are within your possession, that we are required to turn over. It could not only be a criminal offense, but it could also be a civil offense where you, a lawsuit is brought against you to remove you from office for official misconduct. So let's talk about ethics. Mr. Manning talked quite a bit about expectations, and Mayor Mandarin talked about expectations. A lot of wrongdoing revolves around conflicts of interest. And it's where people perceive, whether they're real or perceive conflicts of interest, they think that there's something that doesn't smell right there. So whether there's a personal financial gain, employment, or special treatment of family members or businesses, there are various state laws that require you now, as a government official, to disclose the conflict and abstain from voting and discussing the matter. So not only do you have to abstain from voting, but you can't be advocating for your family member's business to get a contract and then just not vote. You're out of it from the beginning. So at the beginning of the meeting, you've looked at the agenda since Friday, and you see, "Oh, gosh, my son-in-law's business is going to get a survey and contract with the city. Should I vote on that? Well, he's a member of my family within the first degree of consequently or... So first degree of marriage, or first degree of blood relation. You are not to vote to a match." So you would declare a conflict, you'd fill out a form with Lori Carroll, you'd let the mayor know that there are conflicts to disclose, because he's going to say, "Are there any conflicts to disclose?" And you say, "Yes, I have a conflict with..." Agenda item number two, "I shall not vote on it." Well, you can't then discuss it either. You just have to sit quietly, and you have to get off the dais, you have to get off the dais for that item, and then return once it's voted. Okay, so disclosure equals abstain, recuse. So abstain from talking, abstain from voting, or use your self-humidize. So let's look at the charts that are attached. Chapter 171 has real property and business property interests. Chart number one is a business entity that has an issue before the city. Do you have a conflict under chapter 171? Are you a city councilperson? Yes. You exercise responsibilities beyond advisory in nature? Yes, because you vote. So go over to the left, and you receive more than 10% of your gross income from the previous year from the business entity that is coming before the council. So will the action taken, in the big long box below all those little boxes, will the action taken in regard to the business entity have a specific economic effect on that business entity that is distinguishable from the effect on the public? So you are voting on an item that affects a business entity that you get 10% or more than 10% of your income from last year. Should you vote on that? No. So you have to declare a conflict of interest, and you have to abstain from voting. The same if it's 15, so 10% or more, or 15,000 or more in the fair market value of business. Well, you, I'm just a minor partner in the business, I don't get any income from them. Well, what is minor partner? So you have to determine if you have 15,000 or more, and this is going to be public record, somebody's going to find out. So you need to know where your conflicts are, because somebody else will ferret them out, and then it'll come back to bite you. So, 10% or more of voting stock or shares in the business entity. So those things all apply to you personally, and then the three on the right apply to a relative within the first degree of blood or marriage. So, consequinity or affinity. Down below it says, "Parent, child, spouse, stepchild, father or mother-in-law, or son-in-law, or daughter-in-law." Because they, "Ah, divorced her, we're not married anymore." If you have a child together? Yes. Well, you know what? You're married to her until that child is no longer living, according to the law. According to the law of affinity, if you had a child of the marriage, you are still married to that person for the rest of your child's life. Isn't that nice, that a legislator made it so clear? So, if you have any of these things with a parent, a child, a spouse, a mother-in-law, a father-in-law, you cannot vote on anything that they would have a business share and income from, or voting stock in. So let's turn to the next page, real property. This is a lot of times what you see in zoning cases. Would the rezoning that I'm voting on affect my property in a way that's distinguishable from its effect on the public? So if I'm including a zoning change that could make my value more lucrative, and there's a lot of people in opposition to it, and you own the property outright, should you vote on that zoning change? No. Declare your conflict of interest and abstain. And what I mean by that is, when they do a zoning change, they send it out to 200 feet surrounding the property that's having the zoning change. So, you could be substantially impacted if you have a property next to them. Is it going to increase your value if you vote on something that increases the value of the property next to you? If you have a question, it's best to stay out of it. Same thing with a relative, same thing. Your mother-in-law owns a property that's being voted on for a zoning change? Nope. Declare your conflict, abstain. So now let's talk about chapter 553, slide three of your little charts here. Disclose the property being acquired with a couple of funds. So you have vacant land at the edge of town in the city... So, you have vacant land at the edge of town in the city limits and the city needs to build a new public works building. And they wanna buy that land. Can somebody find out who owns that land? Okay, well, yeah, it's so-and-so that owns it. And they go to you and you're running for election. Or you've just been elected. Or you're a city council member and they knew it. And now, the city wants to negotiate with you to buy that property because that's the perfect spot for our public works building. And your property's for sale and you're selling the property. It's gonna be bought with public funds. You're out. You must disclose it and you have to get out of it. Something that big, obviously, you would know. But something small, you also have to keep in your curfew. So, if you have, so go back to your other sheet. 176 is vendor relationships. So, if you have a family member whose business does vending with the city. So, say, "We need public works uniforms." And your son-in-law's company is up for bid on supplying all of our public works uniforms. You don't vote. You declare your conflict and you abstain and recuse yourself. So, you need to be aware, when you get your agenda, that you're not only looking at what the item is, how does it benefit the city? Is it coming off the budget? All those questions that you normally ask yourself. But you need to say, "Do I know this person? It's a small town. Am I related to them in any way? And so how? And does this affect me?" Because somebody else will notice it. Somebody else will question it. So, you need to do your due diligence and make sure you're declaring your conflicts. And let's talk about the ethics ordinance that's attached to the back. If you will go to, one, two, three, four. Go to the section that says Standards of Conduct. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Page eight, section 2.122, Standards of Conduct. "No city official may disclose confidential information gained through the city official's position concerning property, operations, policies, or affairs of the city for gain or advantage in an economic interest of the city official or family member." So, you have a family member whose property is discussed in executive session. And that family member may be, okay, I'll give you an example. There is a city that has oil royalties because they have city-owned lots that have never, that were sold at a tax sale, but they retain mineral rights. And so, this city owns all of these interests in the land, the minerals. It's an oil booming city. City councilperson's dad owns one of those lots. That city councilperson doesn't get to participate in the executive session, number one. But if he did so and didn't realize it, and say the city was gonna make an offer of seventy, thirty split to clear that interest so that there's no question with the oil company about who they're gonna pay the royalties to, he takes that information and does what with it? Nothing. Because otherwise, he's violated his standards of conduct and he could have a complaint against him for violation of the Ethics Code, Standards of Conduct, and he could eventually be removed from the office. So, if you derive information from an executive session or from any city meetings, if you're invited to a city meeting with staff, two by two, to be informed about an upcoming development, an economic development item, and we give you the skinny on all of it and we say, "Well, what do you think? What do we need to ask? Where's your direction? What do you want?" So, we know what to bring to you in executive session. We're not asking you to decide. But when you realize and you have a conflict on that item, you say, "Hey, whoa, my wife owns that property. I can't talk about this. I can't be here." You don't, you're not there, number one, because you have a conflict in the property. But you don't take the information and make it beneficial for somebody else. Because then, when you're in that room, you are the city official. You're not wife-husband. You're city official. And you owe your duty to the city. And it's kinda hard to know that sometimes when it's a small town or who, you know, who you're related to and what they have. But when you find out, it's your duty to disclose that. And I believe it says you have seven days after you're made aware of it. Five P M. on the seventh day after you're made aware, you need to disclose your conflict of interest on Sunday. So, you need to make sure that you're thinking with not only, "What is the issue? What are my questions on the issue?" But, "Ooh, do I have a conflict on this?" So, make sure you check that box first before you get to bargaining. And what we discuss in the executive session, I know we've already said you can't talk about, what's also a part of your conduct of ethics, Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct. Do y'all have any questions? I would urge you to read, I know it's boring, but it's important for you to read the Code of Ethics and the Code of Conduct. Because if somebody files a complaint and investigation ensues, you are impugned with this knowledge that you knew what your standards of conduct were expected of you, that you knew what the Code of Ethics said and that you knew what the Open Meetings Act, the Public Information Act say. And that way, when we're investigating it or we have an outside firm investigating this ethics complaint, you know where you stand and you know, "Hey, I read that and I didn't do that and this is why." It just makes it easier if you have the knowledge, knowledge of how.
No, you're no longer surveillant, so, let's help. Ask questions, go to that.
I have a quick question, just my own curiosity. Well, what if it's your best friend that you play golf with every Saturday? And the public does that, this is your best bud that you play golf with every Saturday? Do the councilmen have any recourse when it comes to that? If it is a subject that comes up or that involves or includes this person?
Okay, so there is impropriety and there's appearance of impropriety. So, impropriety would be, if you vote on something, that you have a legal conflict of interest. That you could be held to. And there's the appearance of impropriety when it doesn't pass the smell test and you know that you probably shouldn't do that, even though you're legally not required to recuse yourself. That's with the Code of Conduct and the Code of Ethics and how you're held to a higher standard. Even though there's not a clear violation of the law, it's a violation of moral character to vote on something that would clearly benefit someone that's close to you.
You should still recuse yourself.
Yeah.
The example you used earlier of something going to the Supreme Court, you know, as a violation of open meetings or, you know, whatever. Obviously, there's a cost to the city when something, when there's a lawsuit brought. Is there a cost to the individual council?
Okay, so if a, if a case is brought against a council member, to a certain extent, the city would represent the council member's interest in that case, in that violation. If the council member is found to have violated, though, they may end up having to get their own counsel, their own lawyer at a certain point to represent them. So, the cost would come in then. And then, also, there are civil and criminal penalties in thousands that could be imposed on that person for violating. And the city would not pay that, doesn't it, Nigel? Right. Yeah, because it's broken off then. You were the city person. You took this training. You gave your certificate to the city secretary. You said you understood. And so, we're gonna say, "He didn't violate that." Uh-uh. But when they say, "Oh, he did," then he may have to reimburse the city and he may have to have a hand at paying his own costs.
The bottom line, if you don't know and there's any hint of doubt, ask our city secretary.
Should you?
When in doubt, you know.
Check them. Read your paper and then...
As an example, at Santikos, I have a relationship professionally through Santikos with a company called Valcor. Everybody knows who Valcor is or a real estate management company. Anything regarding Collins or Charlie Cutler or Valcor comes up, I will step off because I have a business relationship with them. Even though I may not be voting, I don't want to create a fee appearance. Even though technically, I have, I don't pass all questions that are out there. None of those apply. I am not gonna do it, just by way of example. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
I know lawyers don't do math very well.
You asked me, you told me. Lawyers always announce twenty minutes and choose what's right.
You're paid by the word. So, this next topic, there are actually next two topics. One is, I just wanna talk about priorities that I'm sharing in the public community that are a lot of priorities. I don't think you're gonna have a very tough with them. I don't wanna share those with you. And then, I wanna have a discussion where Ron is gonna talk about, I also wanna get what you guys have as your priorities. We are not trying to reconcile priorities today. That would be actually doing business. I'm not trying to do that today. We're just gonna talk about the process by which we need to go through and reconcile priorities and help the staff and help this community be successful. Fair? How's everybody doing right now? Just a little bit. Yes?
Nothing.
What?
Tell me correctly.
What?
In light of the White Board.
Oh. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. But I have been, Jeff, you correct me if I make a mistake here because you've already said this at least four times now. My number one priority is communication. I have been critical and I will continue to be critical. I think this is a hard problem to solve. I'm critical of how the, I'm not critical of people ever. Critical of the process of communication. And I see this as an epidemic problem across the country. So, I'm not picking on anybody. I'm sure you might say, "I think communication is an opportunity." But I don't think we're great at it. The problem I have with communication is how do you get people interested in knowing what's going on? That's the problem I have. Oh, we passed it on the website. So? A lot of people don't go online. It's on Facebook. So? It's in the newspaper. So? Now, I'll get back to priorities. I think what Bob Manning said earlier and what Brian is very passionate about, we gotta get people excited about communication. We gotta get proactive on communication and quickly reactive to things that are going on in the community. I think that's a big priority for, I hope that's a priority we all share. Number two, our master plan was adopted in August last year. It was a ten-year master plan. It is now a nine-year master plan. And so, I believe that we should go through the process and we're gonna talk about that and keeping that thing current and establish a process whereby it is updated at a minimum annually. Even if it's just to say, "Yep, everything is exactly like we want, but we need to make sure that we're doing that as a process." I would like to establish that if something has value beyond my tenure as an elected official.
Mayor, is that something we do as this group or is that something you do in the master planning committee?
So, I have it as a gen item, but I'm gonna suggest that we have to have a committee. But we'll talk about that when we get to that gen item. Number three, we're working on this. Ryan and I are on the Unified Development Code Committee whereby with Laura, with Jeff and a bunch of other people. We have steering committee. And we are going through the process of updating the ordinances into the Unified Development Code. It is a tedious process. Ryan Fowler, I'd like to hear what you think about the process so far. Let's talk about it because I don't think everybody's had a chance to hear about it yet. Just really briefly, though.
Yeah, briefly, actually. It is a magnanimous, gigantic issue. It is a corralled into a specific set of time. And trying to get perspective on the, how huge the problem, or not the problem, but how huge the tasking is and getting it done within the confines of that time frame is still perplexing to the group in itself. You know, it's still trying to figure that out. I think it is a very representative group that is bringing in multitude layers of issues from environmental to developer to activist to whatever. So, I think it's off to a good start. Now, it's following through and holding ourselves accountable to do a good job. And I think that's kind of where your opinions.
Just as an example, so just so everybody knows who's on that committee. We've got Ross Parlow, we've got Brian, we've got me, we've got Ben Elbridge. We have Travis Robertson, we have Chazzy Dunning, we have Ben Adams.
Jeff Carroll.
And Jeff Carroll and...
Elvis.
I said Elvis, Parlow.
Harlow.
I've got, and Guy Sanders, I'm sorry, Guy Sanders. So, that's the group. And then, we have Laura, Jeff, we have Nick, Ron. You're not in the committee. You get the output of the committee. So, as an example, we're gonna, we're divided up and we're going through, we're breaking things up into groups. We've gone in small groups. There's a couple groups of three. And Brian and I are on the same group right now. We're looking at non-residential design ordinances. That document is a hundred and sixty pages long. That one document, and that's one of six or seven major documents that we have to get through and take that and say, "Does that align with the master plan?" That's what we're doing right now. It is not trivial. That's why I'm not gonna do it anymore. I will put nine on it. It's not trivial. And man, the last three and a half hours session we had this past Monday, was it a history lesson about what's going on in this community? And was it an eye-opening experience to recognize this is not trivial to address the past and know where we are today and talk about going forward? This is not trivial. And that's just non-resident. It's complicated. So, anyway, it's a priority. Our game plan right now has us maybe by the end of this year finishing a version one with an extension and all that. By way of example, Fair Oaks went through this process. It took them a little over two years. They also didn't have some of the basic ordinances that we have in place. But so, it took them two years to go through that, just by way of example. That's a high priority for me. I was fairly critical in the past about the mobility process, the discussion about the Kendall Gateway. I was very vocal. I wanted us to meet with county and the city and the school. And we didn't wanna do that. And where we are today is we have a second iteration of a loop that's been proposed to this community that for twelve years in a row, we've absolutely done nothing with it. We just continue to keep it camp. Starting in January, I started working with county officials and specifically Don Durden, Darryl Lux, who said, "I said, 'This is gonna be a very high priority mine and we're gonna work on this together. And we're gonna pull everybody up.'" And what you see happening on the 28th is the culmination of that. Let Don Durden take the lead because really, mobility around Bernie is primarily a county. County is gonna have to manage that in a primary way. But we gotta be aligned. And what the school does is a big deal because the school doesn't need to disclose the properties. "Oh, we're gonna build a school right there." And then, everybody, all the real estate agents go crazy because they know that ahead of time and then the price of land gets out of whack, right? Schools can't be secretive about what they're thinking. But we can't just pop up and put a high school somewhere on a street that wasn't built for that kind of traffic, right? Too late, we've already done all that. So, what Don Durden is announcing on the 28th, I am highly supportive of. There's gonna be a citizen committee put together. City's gonna appoint four people. County's gonna appoint four people. And then, there's a laundry list. If you haven't, if it's not already posted, has anybody seen it online? I'm telling you what's about to be posted online. He and I have been going back and forth almost. There's gonna be a citizens committee, basically, like the TPCC that was done back in 2002. TPC is Thoroughfare Planning Citizens Committee. They put together a lot of ideas back in 2002. And a lot of those ideas have been implemented. It's a good body of work, but it's gonna be about a year-long process. We'll be engaged in that, but primarily, the committee's gonna drive that work. So, that's been a high priority mine even since before the elections were finalized. The last one that's big for me is water. It's just water. Any Dean fan, you've basically seen the movie Dean? It's water. It's the most important thing. Spice, actually, most important thing. I think that we have some issues coming out there and I would like to find a way to address that. I'll talk more about that later. Those are my priorities. Priorities, yours?
My first priority was mobility and pretty much going over what you just said. I enjoyed hearing that the Hill Country Alliance, where the county commissioners indicated that they were considering or at least would look at the possibility of a master plan that looks at conservation.
Yep.
Looks at thoroughfares, and looks at development within a county setting, which is what other counties have done in regional areas, I thought that was pretty...
Very few counties have done that, but...
Uh, creating accountability, and what I mean by that is, uh, our master plan can contain specific action items. Uh, I see, uh, I would like to see agenda items, brought to the city council, be tagged in association with those action plans, uh, schedule departmental reports on a frequent basis, and then review the success of those, reaching those action plans and then, uh, and setting firm goals on that. I'd like to create a new organic resource to discover issues facing our city, kind of what Bob Manny talked about, I'd like to see a new dedicated position on city staff that's for, for the purpose to organize community development focusing on neighborhoods. Uh, I would like to see neighborhood organizations, uh, created, where block parties, street fairs and such, and also a means of communication are developed. I'd like to create neighborhood champions from each neighborhood that represent, uh, create representation that meets with city council district people, say on a quarterly basis. In other words, a conduit of communication of getting to grass or issues in neighborhoods, um, and then how to get those neighborhood, uh, issues to agenda items on the city council. And then the last, but certainly not least, has to do with our historic structures and historic district. Um, I'd like to task the historic memoir commission with, uh, making public those items that were already identified, uh, and bringing those to the city council, figuring out a communication system for notifying those property owners to see if they would want to participate in a designation, and also a way to create financial incentives that will, um, um, help with the maintenance and the development of the historical structures in the city through all of these.
Let's go to the stuff, everything you said. How about yours?
So, um, I have five, the top three land use, it's interconnected in UDC, but number two is mobility, which is a wide spectrum, not just what you talked about, but also an activity of public access, but still within the idea of mobility. Uh, three, communication slash transparency, um, that was one of the things I mentioned when I got appointed, it's important to me, hence my continued, you know, Facebook presence. Um, I put stormwater, we could probably just add that, tack that to water, but, um, interrelated into water in general, but also where that water goes and where it comes from. And then economic development, um, I guess priorities and getting, I guess, businesses here that fit with the demographics that exist. So, you know, we're gonna get lots of service business, but we don't necessarily have that demographic here, so, um, how do we plug in this cybersecurity network, et cetera, that's in San Antonio? Um, I think that I've told, uh, that EEC, that should be a priority for them, I think for us, as officials, that should as well. Um, and kind of connecting to that, um, housing for the working communities, so call it the twelve to twenty-dollar per hour workforce, that's gonna be the backbone for the service industry without public transportation from San Antonio, that has to happen.
Go, that's good, what are yours?
I have the public safety items, you know, I know there are challenges to text dot, I, I, I can give more information and see what challenges we have with working with text dot, or, uh, finding some, uh, relationship that we can improve some of the public safety at, uh, aspects of, or blocking and bypass trails, uh, public safety in relation to a lot of the main street activities that we have engaged in, that block off, uh, main street, you know, we're blocking these things off with, uh, mild barriers, you know, not real, and I gotta stop my, I'm gonna throw up something to those, or we're blocking it off with a six hundred thousand dollar fire truck, um, I think we can do something there. Sidewalk connections, I was real happy, we had a lot, I have some people in my neighborhoods that were, and wanted to talk about sidewalks, and I was happy to, as I was, as I attended city council to hear that there were sidewalks in the planning stages, and I've gotten more information, there are stages of that, that I'd like to see maybe advanced. Connecting, uh, we could make some connections that can connect thousands of people to more of our downtown district, I'd like to see that more of a priority. And then the stormwater, you know, stormwater road room is, I just, I think we, we, school, the, the school that was built on John's Road, I don't know why there wasn't a, a little more visionary aspect of some, some of the stormwater drainage issues that would come along, but I, I actually got a picture of, you know, people driving down John's Road, putting out a twenty-foot rooster tail onto the sidewalk, and they're driving in the middle of the road, not even in the lane, uh, in this, in stormwater. We've got a couple of issues in my district, I'm sure they're pleasing on the city, like you can talk.
Twenty-five, Richard, tell me is that a speeding? Joe, what are yours?
Maybe even more specific. The first one to relate to, which you're working on the UDC, with I-ten. I-ten's a text dot issue, I know that, but first thing I wanna see is either an end to the sign committee, or if we continue to have a sign committee, I want an end to any automatic variances.
Okay, UDC?
I don't wanna see that again, because I think that's something the city council needs to decide on. It all comes back to beautification, which gets into Obola District, Sierra District comes back to UDC, so both I-ten, because I think I-ten can be a, as it traverses Bernie, can be an attractive concrete jungle, um, and it comes back to enforcement, we need better enforcement. I think we need a budget for several more enforcement positions, because right now, it was already mentioned, you know, ordinances that without enforcement are really suggestions. It's like a master plan without ordinances. Additionally, historic and environmental quality of life, again, these things tied together. Uh, coming from a city that's very historic, and owning property over one of the most historic streets in the country, in that city, where you have to literally take six months to change a window, which I've been through as a, as a condo president, um, we don't wanna do that, but by the same token, people should not fear the expansion of historic pres, of, of designations, it actually enhances value over time, in property value and community value. Roads, uh, obviously, we know what's going on with, with our economy, I specifically for this district, would like to see some conversation, you know, about a fire station on the other side of I-ten, or a sub...
God, that's a plant, that's a plant.
Is that a plant?
Uh, it is, I know exactly what that means.
Also, I mean, also a, a, at least substation because of the growth of that side of the, of the city, and I-ten is somewhat of a barrier. Um, I would also like to, uh, propose for consideration, not that I'm looking to have mass transit in Bernie, but certainly in, in the downtown area, from weekends or festivals, it would be great to have some very historic-looking, not buses, trolleys, what we wanna call them, that can move people around the city without having to get in a car and park and find a place to go every single place. Doesn't have to be every day of the week, but a lot of cities of our type have that, and it's a great, uh, enhancement for tourism and for locals who wanna attend all the various festivals. And the last thing I have, I just came back from Holland, Michigan, the Tool Festival, and I'm gonna propose that the city work with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, EDC, and the Arts Council to look at a field blooming festival, a wildflower festival. We don't need a worse festival like in, uh, like in New Braunfels, but why don't we take advantage of being the gateway to the hill country and celebrate wildflowers? It fits into the whole theme with, you know, environment, land use, et cetera.
Thanks, Jeff.
Maybe more specific.
Um, mobility, uh, my district happens to be include forty-six, which I hear about on a daily basis, but not just mobility of automobiles, mobility of pedestrians, and along with that, um, we've talked and we've looked at the cost of taking over Main Street, text dot, we'd love to give us Main Street. Um, we've got the Obola done now, which was a big cost, I'd like to focus more on, um, moving that forward, um, and with that, we would have, be able to have more pedestrian-friendly downtown, where you don't take a lot of the, the, and along with that, we need to look at additional parking for our downtown, especially if we're gonna look at expanding, um, our UDC is updating that as a priority, updating their sign ordinance is a pet peeve of mine.
I don't think I've seen it.
So, um, and I'm piggybacking on what Ty said, economic development, wanting more, look at cleaning, energy, low-water users, high-paying jobs for our residents, so that we can hopefully keep our young people here instead of moving to San Antonio.
So I took marks where there was kind of duplicity. It's kind of funny, it's the first time we ever have some conversations since I've been on council. You don't get a reduce. You don't get a reduce.
Tax relief, you know, we've had a lot of people talk about their taxes are going up by way of their appraisals going up, increasing appraisals are people increased tax revenue. Uh, we, we just need, we're gonna be held accountable to our constituents if we're increasing taxes by way of the, you know, it's not our fault that the appraisal district went up, but, uh, we just need to, we should be looking at, I don't know if there's a, there's a reason, if there's a reason not to be reducing taxes, I'm sure we're about to get in the budget, and we'll have that, but it's a couple of these looking at.
I wanted to just mention something on what Donna said, I think it would be wise to consider, uh, what the, and this is sort of the staff that come back to you with as the mayor, what are the resources that the city has that we could invite, let's say, geekdom fund, geekdom, uh, alabot angels, to come have a little visitation, uh, morning like this in Bernie, as to what Bernie has to offer, because a lot of these tech-related companies, and whether it's health tech or, or IT tech, um, they like being near a big city, but they don't always like being in a big city. And I still, and I said this when I was running through office with Tim, and then again, this is, I think that's something we should definitely be looking at, we should beat that city that they wanna be at, near San Antonio, but not in San Antonio. But they kind of didn't know what the city can offer them, and I don't know that they know that, I mean, I'm not sure I know that, so...
Got it, I have incubation ideas, that's kind of what we talked about there. Those are another reading.
Yeah, just real quick. And it kind of ties into parking structure and development, but I think there's cooperative opportunities with respect to BISD, has the old administrative building, they have that field there, there's gonna be a development that was originally on a plan, where that was a development area, so that's a neat idea. And then parking, you know, you think of the, uh, land where the maintenance shop is for county behind Main Street, uh, there's an opportunity for maybe, uh, parking structure, uh, that can be coordinated between county and city.
Try it.
Oh, yeah. So, okay, staff, what do you wanna work on? Are we aligned? We got the lay on this down, we gotta prioritize guys, that's what we're gonna boil it down to. Ron, I prepared, you take the floor, Ron, and, and then I'm gonna wrap it up.
Seventh fastest growing county in the country. A lot of this stuff you brought up costs money, when you talk about tax reduction, a fire station costs sixteen dollars, staffing, building, the equipment, et cetera, so, what I'm saying is, a lot of this stuff is nice, it sounds nice, but at the end of the day, it comes back to money. So what I've got, got for you all is a draft of, take it from what the mayor was talking about before, that this is a, kind of a draft of what, uh, staff internally is talking about, and a lot of the stuff you all are talking about is on there, like when Brian talks about historic preservation stuff, that's tied to our master plan right in here, so it's not really, but it, it, it covers a lot of the specific things we're trying to do, but I don't believe the city of Bernie is overstapped by any means, and I think a lot of this stuff is, is good, and if the council wants to do that in the future, as far as moving forward with, uh, any more personnel, et cetera, we can, we can do that, but, uh, it, it, kind of money, because it's all dying in priorities, what you all wanna do. So we'd be glad to, uh, you know, obviously, we'll have many opportunities to go through this type of stuff, through the budget process, through future retreat meetings, if we have more of these going forward, through, uh, council workshops, through, uh, budget workshops, to, uh, just having long, long conversations with the mayor and/or me about these type of things, but, uh, a lot of this stuff is, is, is good stuff, a lot of this stuff is stuff we've talked about with, with staff, in fact, I don't think I've heard anything today, we haven't had numerous discussions about over the year with different councils to go forward, but, uh, clearly, I think good exercise, and it comes down to, uh, what this council wants to prioritize and do as we go forward. But, uh, I was, I was talking to Chief Meckle recently about the issue of a fire station, Chief Coeur and I talked about the substation for the police department that touched up, and Doug's number was about sixteen dollars for a, for a, a fire station. That's, uh, you consider what one penny in our tax rate raises, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that's something like that's pretty, pretty extreme. The, uh, something, you know, all you might don't know about is what Esperanza out there, we did part of the development rate with them, is that I think it's one thousand two hundred and forty homes, they are to build a fire station out there and put a fire truck in there. But today, we need a fire station more like what Regent Park does on that side of town. So Doug and I were having this conversation recently about, okay, if we know we're getting this fire station, we need fire trucks from Esperanza one day, but then we need one in the Regent Park, that means you could have three fire stations now, staffing and new vehicles, et cetera, for three stations, so what can we afford as we, as we go forward? So some of these things, like the, the police substation, the, the fire station, et cetera, probably require a bond issue. Any major mobility problem would require a bond issue. And so what I'm saying is, the likelihood of us reducing taxes would probably slim at this point in time, which goes back to what Nina and Ty were on with economic development, that's why I think economic development is so critical to us, and the mayor and I have been spending some time with the, the actual Bernie, Kinnon County Economic Development Corp, which are talking about these type of things, and where we go, because we've gotta have some action going on in those areas, we gotta be reaching out to cybersecurity people, et cetera, trying to bring what we develop to Bernie, Texas. I'm, I'm with you, Doc, as far as I-ten, you know, that's, so if we could keep things perfect world, pretty historic, progressive, as far as all the different services we provide, it'd be a great thing, so it's, it's a big challenge when you're in that seventh fastest growing county to, to do all this stuff. And quite frankly, I, I don't consider Bernie, Texas a rich town, we don't have a big tax base, we're trying, we're trying to, to flip our tax base, we're more commercial than residential out there, as we're back to the economic development, it is so critical in my mind, and Tim, Tim and I have talked about controlling our own destiny, and what that means to be, and, and part of that is, we have an EDC that's somewhat separate from us, and if we have fixed costs that we have to take care of, if we have these goals that the city council has, from my perspective, I want to control our own destiny with you guys, first and foremost, not rely on some other agency out there, so that's part of the, the dance and discussion we're having with them right now, is if we have all these plans and desires, we need to make things happen, and have some accountability, and have some goals, and, and we talked yesterday about, you know, you may not get everything quickly, economic development's a hard process to go through, but at least if we get in the matters box and take swings and, and contact enough people and try to develop these relationships and contacts out there, maybe one out of every ten, we, we get a, a home run out. But it's, it's, it's not an easy process to go through, but, but in fact, the housing, the worker, the worker bee housing, I would lend a, a compliment to this one, but I'll bet you not even half of our employees live inside the city.
Less than forty percent.
So there's, there's another issue out there. Infill, infill development, a big issue in Bernie, Texas, trying to avoid straw, if we can, if we can take existing land and get that developed, how much, Tim was talking earlier today about, how much developable land do we have in city Bernie? Get an answer to that. The annexation handout we have on, we're out there right now, so obviously we're gonna be able to grow, like we used to be able to grow. Anyway, something I, I want you all to realize also from, from our perspective is, we are the city of Bernie, I just like to think we have a good reputation, or to try to have a great reputation, by having who we are and where we're all about. But at the same time, we have city laws and we have state laws that dictate how we operate, and we have to go through due, due process for that, and we try to figure everybody fairly because we come through the door, so we may not like what the guy's talking about, but from my perspective, we have to treat them fairly and undergo through process at least to, to paint their case. That's not what we deal with, as, as we go forward with, with economic development issues too. But, uh, a lot of big challenges out here, and everything you all say I think are, are all worthy, great things, but it, it should come down to time and money, and hopefully we'll have more of these, Mayor, and we'll be able to consistently fine-tune and hone in our priorities.
Yeah. When was the last quality of life bond issue? In two thousand and seven, so it's been twelve years.
And the good news there is, because we had your own, we told people to go six cents on the tax rate, we only went on two cents. So we, we have a good history there of, of being good stewards.
So you have four cents left?
Well, you know what? I said that, but the previous councils have told me no, that's, that's forgotten.
Yes, that tax rate.
Forty-seven cent, forty-two.
Do, do we know what the school district tax rate?
Four dollars, four-five.
County's thirty-five, county's forty-five, school's dollar.
School's around a dollar thirteen.
And this appraisal district, how often do they reappraise?
Annually.
They're supposed to.
The big changes seem to come every three to five years.
I was going to say.
I'll just tell you something the protests are.
My house went up.
On regular basis.
Say again?
My house went up nine percent.
Well, ours went up, and a lot of our neighbors went up fifty percent, but I guess there's a cap on how they can tax us. So the net result was ten percent increase in the tax, but evaluation went up fifty percent.
County appraisal district is right across the street from City Hall. You were talking about that there? So check it out. How many city staff are on? Two hundred, uh, two hundred and eight? You add up all these priorities, you add all these up, doesn't work. We're going to move everything about a half a millimeter a day, and we're going to get nothing done. And I think that what we have to do is we've got to coalesce on some things that we believe are really, really important. We've not done that since I've been on council. We've not had one discussion about priorities in the last year. What, what Bob Manning said, we've been dealing with agendas that come to us and we do not set aside any time to talk about. Other than the master plan, and we laid out, there's some project ideas that are laid out there, and you guys remember when I first gone, oh, this is where we're getting, we're finally getting what I was really wanting to. So just give me order of magnitude. And there's, we're back to the master plan, that section that says here, here's things that we want to achieve. We got to write that down, and write on command, uh, this, it's a really amazing tool, isn't it? This is a tool that I have used at USA A to manage a billion dollars a year in projects. It's just a spreadsheet. This is what I'm using at Santicos, because when I walked in, we had more than this in terms of things we're trying to work on, and you know what? We weren't getting anything done. And so what this is, what you got?
He's showing us.
He's showing the full spreadsheet.
By way of example, um, this is all the projects that the I T group is working on inside of my company. And at USA A, we had, uh, thirteen major programs. That's a big company. That was, that was to manage thirteen, uh, one billion dollars a year of projects. That was, that was what I did. We wrote it down into things that look just like this. You get down to project names, you have beginnings, and you have end dates, you're setting expectations. There's some nomenclature in there, you see, it says C P D I, some of these are red, some of these are green. This is real data. We have a project management discipline. You define the concept. What are we trying to accomplish? You go through the design process, and you say, oh, the, the concept is I want to build a house. This is, every one of us has been through something like this. You go through design. When do you make the real decision? Are you going to build this house or not? At the end of design. At the end of design, you know how much it's going to cost. And then you say, okay, let's build this baby, that's development. And then in I T terms, those things, there's implementation based sometimes, and that's what the I is. So concept, plan, design, implement. And we have a, and we track against this every, every two weeks at Santicos right now, um, every two weeks at USA A for a billion dollars worth of projects. Is it hard work? It is. Keeps us on track, and we know exactly what we're trying to accomplish. When things go red, I'm running late, or I'm going over budget. That's all that means. They can be yellow. Blue means I'm done. Green means I'm on track. This is something I would like to see us get closer towards, where we, we talk about accountability, Brian. This to me gets to accountability on the development side. But it starts with prioritization first. I bet if we listed every single project that's being worked on by the staff, we have more projects than staff, is my guess. And that's unfair. That's unfair to the staff. That makes Ron, Ron is running a sweatshop. Because he's responding to everything under the sun, responding to city council, every request that comes in. Right or wrong, in the spirit of customer service, he gets treated as high priority. And the question has to be, if we're going to work on this, what are we not going to work on now? That has to be the question that we answer every single time. So we ask that question. I ask this question specifically. Annexation laws about to change. We want to protect our future, and we want to do non-annexation annexation agreements for a bunch of properties, and we want to do it fast, we want to do it now. What are we not going to do? Do we have the staff, remember me asking these questions? These are the questions the staff has to ask council. And we want, I think we should authorize the staff to ask the council. Okay, we want to insert, uh, this idea that Brian has. We want to go create neighborhood organization champions. Who's going to work on it? What are you not going to work on now? That's where we got to get to a level of that sophisticated prioritization. It's not a fancy tool. It's really hard to run together. And then somebody has to hold us accountable to that, and that's your job, Ron. But I would like to see us get to, frankly, and even if it's only for the next two years. Who knows what's happening two years? And you get married, you get, you get a new wife, doesn't matter. It's get to where, Ron, I would like you to show this at least once a month in front of council. So here's all the things we're working on. If you get into a format, this looks trivial, but it's really hard to do. Because what goes on behind the scenes is you got to think about who's working on what. Do we have an end date expectation for all these projects? Can we break them down into phases? Now, in the business world, I'll tell you what I did. I broke projects into smaller and smaller increments, right? Especially when they're I T, heavy I T related, insurance is mostly I T related kind of stuff. Break them into smaller and smaller projects. What is the consequence of that? It's more expensive. Why? Because you're doing a lot of things twice, and three times and four times. Instead of a big long, hunky project, but I'm also reducing risk, right? If I have a project that's going to be a year long, I T project's going to be a year long, how much risk is in that project? A ton. A ton of risk. You can break it down into quarter increments, only three months at a time. Have I reduced the risk? But you have to do testing four times because I'm breaking the four checks, right? So I've increased the cost. But I increase the probability of moving things forward at a pace that I start to see results. I'm going to, so we're only going to build you a garage for your firehouse. Build you an office lab. You can't break some things up. I get that. But some things, if we can get creative in how we look at these projects. Neighborhood organization, that probably ought to be the mine. What does that mean? What are the steps to get there? Is that a high priority? Does the whole council want that? So why does that displace? Is that more important than mobility? No, because we also, mobility is important. Mobility is not just mobility in the county. There's thorough plan, it has to be updated. But we have to prioritize the staff's time. And everything can't be the priority one. You know the old cliche, right? What is it? Right. Okay, we all know it, but why are we doing this to ourselves? There's always limited resources, always. If you have people sitting around not working on something, then you're overstaffed. I don't think we're overstaffed. I think we're working on too many things, and I think this is one of the things the council needs to spend some time on. I want this to be something that we do sooner than later. Does this happen in concert with the master plan update? Potentially. But the master plan has to be one of the major drivers of our priorities. Some of these ideas are not in the master plan, right? Yes, sir.
Just my question for staff was, what tools do you have? And are you adequately good to handle the job? So we task you with, hey, this is a priority. But then, has anyone really sat down and said, have you got all the software you need? And I know the cost side is, but tool structure too for getting them to do the priorities, it's all important.
The cool thing, if you notice on this list, uh, it's a year's worth of planning. And I actually have the next, I have twenty twenty already done as well inside my company. This lays right into the budgeting process, right? And budgeting is not just money, it's people. So when you really sophisticated project management, you get down, you're putting, you're putting people's time down at the hour level of detail. So where are you? You are now working two hundred seventy-five hours a week because of all the projects you're working on. And by the way, there's only a few things that come here, why? So you're down to a hundred and eighty hours a week. That's what the tool was shot to show you, if we were really to be honest with ourselves. Or what's going to happen is these projects keep stretching out and stretching out, stretching out, because Molly keeps getting taken away from an important project, working on a piece, um, on an ankle biker. Also, the U S, the U S point of sale. So, uh, to me, if I were to put like a number zero priority, it would be, we got to define the priorities, we'll see. So that's, I'm going to leave it at that because we're not conducting business today for just talking about things, but I wanted to hear what are these priorities were. It's interesting to see that. I expected this to happen. You put this list on there, what are you going to work on Monday? Well, not because it's holiday, what are you going to work on Tuesday?
I don't know, you have to tell us.
This is the problem I see. This is what I've been watching the last year since I've been in the agency.
I have a question. I, I, I mean, conceptually, when you say mobility, that is a very broad topic.
It is.
Okay, so as a city council, as a government, as a staff, as an entity, if we break it down as you just said. Okay, I made one little tiny little suggestion about mobility, about, you know, trolley cars, whatever. How does that get implemented? Do we have, well, I guess what I'm getting at is it seems like one of the things I keep seeing is we keep studying, to try to get the big plan, the comprehensive plan, but as we keep studying for the comprehensive plan, you don't forget the little thing. We don't move the ball down the field. You know, it's like an offense. We're trying to score the touchdown with a ninety-yard pass, we're not getting the three yards of cloud and dust in the first down. And I'm trying to figure out in my mind, and perhaps everybody else's, how do we reconcile those problems? Because yes, we need the, the big picture, but how do we then come back and say, okay, here's, here's A, here's a little bit of A of the project. Can we do that? And what does it cost? And all the things you just said, how do we get there?
Yeah, that's what my job is. This is what I do at Santicos, is I let this whole process, got this all put together. Is this something you're going to snap your fingers it's going to happen? Nope, it ain't that easy. Because by the way, what are you working on sixty hours a week as it is? Notice he works the least. What are you working on a day-by-day basis? Whatever hit your desk. I mean, it's not like you're sitting around trying to fluff your thumbs. I've been, I've been there a lot this week. Oh, incidentally, on all the things I read online, minimum expectation of hours on a city council person in a small city is, everything I read online, twenty hours. Men, just FYI. So I'm trying to make you feel guilty, and I, I actually, I think I would stay this week. So I think that's your job, is you got to get, you got to tell the city council, here's the resources I have, here's the capabilities I have, here's the priorities I think that we have. And that's what council has to spend some time with you. Say, what are our priorities, right? Because you're chasing a million things right now. And, and it doesn't feel like we're, I think it's a disservice to the staff. I think we have demands that are unreasonable. I think we have expectations that are unfounded. And, and the simple basics are, we don't have a plan. We don't have a plan in time for how we deal with the few limited precious resources that we have. That's how I see it. So, so I think this is the future thing that we have to talk about. I think this becomes a workshop in the very near future. And, and I would suggest that I'll be glad to help you with tools, if you have them. It's just a spreadsheet. The hard part now is getting it written, is making that become a life and reflect reality, not what we want it to look like. It's got to reflect reality. And I would suggest even showing things in, what's up here, in colors, and being honest. I've been a project manager almost my entire career. A good project manager can see around corners. We don't wait till around corner, go, oh crap, I didn't know that was coming. A good project manager can anticipate what's going to happen and say, I think I'm going to have a train wreck in six weeks on this project. And you make it red, and you say, I need help. That's what you do. You don't say, I want to look good, I want the public to think everything's going perfect. Don't do that. Tell the truth. That's the hardest part. That's a cultural change. This is a cultural change that I'm asking for, if we want to do it. It's bad on him, I say it's bad on him. Well, this is the best practice in the most well-run companies and cities in the world. And by the way, while I'm showing you, this is not Tim Hammers' idea. This comes straight out of Project Management Institute, if you want to go look it up. That is the organization in the U S for how you become an expert in project management. I'm certified by the management expert. Process engineering is another thing we do. This requires process change too. How does somebody become a priority? Quentin sent an email. Nope, that ain't the way it gets prioritized. There has to be a vetting process. That's you. And you're going to say, when it comes in, here's the way it's going to be handled, and here's how things are going to be prioritized, right? Day-to-day interactions, I'm not talking about day-to-day, just questions, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about things that are really projects. We'll get into a debate, what's a project? Well, it's a task, but that says act. I can help with that nomenclature. It's simple when you get down to it. But I think, think what Bob Manning said when he left, I think he gave us a pretty big charge, right? Great staff, great new council, perhaps a white mind, I think that's probably true, more than we probably differ. We can make some amazing things happen, but we got to get organized, and we can't just keep shooting from the hip every single day. It just doesn't work. So I'm off my soapbox. Unless somebody else has something else to add to that. It is, yes.
The context is business in a city municipal government, and the limitations of the communication, things that we heard about today, which for any of us that are new, if we're trying to feel how to walk through that without feeling we're going to go to jail. It's red, it's red and jet, it always happens. And also, uh, the idea is this is how we've always done it in breaking that mold.
Yeah.
And realizing we have a dynamic process. We have the seven, our best is growing county and within this in the country. We have a dynamic process that's going to require new ideas. And so how do we incorporate new ideas? And how do we utilize the restrictions of the communication process?
Yep.
To get it to work so that we maximize into a system like what you're talking about. And it's going to, for me, it's like doing statistical sampling. When processes are more dynamic, you have to sample more frequently.
Absolutely.
And so I think that in order to deal with the changes that we're talking about, it's going to require a lot more time and a lot more frequency of required of the people that are in this room.
I agree with that, by the way. And it does, you know, the old adage, uh, no shoes for the copper's son. Did you read that? So the copper's so busy making shoes for everybody else, he can't make shoes for his own son. The message there is you got to take time to take care of yourself, take care of your family. You can't be so busy taking care of everybody else that you don't make time for yourself. I'm too busy to, I'm too busy to plan. That's another old saying. It's just stupid. I'm too busy to plan. If you would plan, you wouldn't be so busy. Right? These are all things that, this is what I'm trying to, this is what I would like to bring to the table. It's probably very different. I, I know this is a big difference. This is a cultural change. It's huge. Because I don't think you've ever had this kind of a, um, you know, you've never had this many things going on at this time, as concurrent as you've had in the past. This is the most busy time you've ever been in. In your entire, I would say thirty-five years, I was correct today, thirty-eight years, it'd be more consistent. This is the busiest you've ever seen it. You've been here twenty-nine years. Busy, right? You've been here seventeen? Eighteen, eleven?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. It's busy. And the thing you have to do is you have to make time to pause. Doesn't mean everything stops. I know that's been suggested in the past, we've just got to stop everything. You can't throw everybody out the pool. There's still things that have to happen, but we have to make time to plan. In fact, from the very first project, I would suggest we make it a high priority. It's the project to prioritize, and we make a commitment to it, and we say, when's it going to be finished? And, and that we is the big we. But, but I think you got to give us a clue on what that's going, what you need from the council. There's a lot of stuff that's been going on for a long time, and I might disagree with my man. It doesn't mean we're just going to instantly go out face a hundred and eighty degrees from the past council. I don't think that's really probably in the cards right now. There's a lot of good things in flight that everybody knows we need. But, but what I'm concerned about is that we've overworked the staff. We, it's not a good place. I've been in that situation on the other end of it, and I don't want to do that to anybody. And I think that's one of our responsibilities as a council.
And I agree. I, I think, I think we're having to do, we're having to reprogram to a certain degree because of the demands, offices, bars, what's happening around Bernie, Texas. So how do we, how do we work smarter, at the same time find money to, to do these type of things? I mean, there's a lot of issues out there, but in a day, we know the council has this list of the priorities, and the A priorities, so to speak, and the B's are down here. And it makes it a lot easier for us to move forward.
Right. I'm going to go back to the very first conversation. Our role. Our role is to hold you accountable to manage the city, our resources that you have. Our role is to set priorities, our role is to set targets. Our role is to hold you accountable. Our role is to respond to our constituents. But our role is not to manage the staff. And I think, I'm, I'm asking you guys on the staff, speak up with Ron, what do you need? Let's get it on the table. Let's really think it through. It may cost more money. But I'd rather do it right. Tax really, theoretically, that sounds good. Practically though, in the city and all the things that we have facing us right now, it may not be the right time. Practically, though, in the city and all the things that we have facing us right now, it may not be the right time to be talking about that. Might be, might not, don't know. But if we have a two thousand nine, the last thing you wanna do, we know that in two thousand nine. Right? Property values devalue pretty quickly. A lot, a lot of cities were on the verge of bankruptcy because they couldn't afford to do what they needed to do. We gotta be thoughtful about how we plan our financial future too. Lots aren't running away with millions of dollars in the pocket because of our tax rates. It's the, it's the number of projects that we can work on. This isn't an individual personal pockets. It's what we need to manage, we're the stewards of this community. How do we manage the priorities? That's what it boils down to, so. That'll be an action item, probably, that we can talk about sooner than later. Okay. Good with that topic? Did I offend anybody? Are you guys excited about the future?
Yes.
I am. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't excited about it. Especially after my first ninety seconds. Yes, that's for you.
Going back to the very beginning, our communication, one thing that's come up several times is education. And we're all going through an educational process, and we're all willing and ready to learn from you guys. We wanna teach you what we know, but we just all need to get smarter about how we learn. And that's exciting.
The most important thing that takes is time. Time together, and if we're together, guess what, you're not working on these projects. How do we balance that? How do we respect time? That's what we gotta figure out. Again, we never had this conversation while I've been on council. I don't know if you had a fire council or fire session, but this is a big deal to me. This is all about applying some basic organizational skills, which I'm good at, by the way. I'm a visionary of mine, Paul, or Joe Michaelis, or Quinn, I'm an operator, and I just wanna hope you guys be successful.
We got a new wife in ten halls.
Sister-wise, game of sisters. Let me ask you a question. I can plaster you the rest of this as fast as Ron will talk. Are you guys okay to go a little bit longer than twelve? I'm looking at you specifically. How much longer do you have?
I'm giving you an extra hour.
Okay, but it's not gonna take an extra hour. Are you guys okay? I was plastering a couple of things in. I'm gonna do it next, did I? Update the city home rule charter. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to just too much, is if we wanted to update the city's charter, it would be on my list, it'd be number six or seven on my top five list. It's a, because right now the city charter is inaccurate. It does not accurately reflect our requirements. There's some other things in there that, when it was written at its time, twenty-plus years ago, it probably had the best of intentions, but the world has changed. If we wanted to update the city charter, we probably wanted to appoint a committee to work on that. We might have some people in the community. We, as council members, cannot go out and advocate. Is that true? We can't go out and, by the way, to update the city charter, we'd have to get it all rewritten, we have to go through the process, and then it has to be voted on by the public. Because it has to be voted on, we cannot go out and advocate for people to vote for this. That is...
Against the law.
Against the law.
She'll send you to jail.
So the reason that you get a citizen community together is because they become your advocates in the community. They could go out and advocate on behalf and say, we wanna update the city charter. What are some things that get updated when you go through a city charter? We'll let the committee figure that out, but it might be things like term limits. It might be correct all the inaccuracies in there. And the city, who did you send me? This week? What city was that? I forgot city.
Kyle. Kyle, beautiful.
One of those cities. They just gave the, everybody on the city council a raise. Now we got a big raise, you know, like twelve hundred dollars a month or whatever it is, our city council members.
Thirteen hundred instead of two hundred.
Thirteen. Yeah, I'm not advocating for that, by the way. I'm not advocating for that. But they just, there's a lot of things. Let us cut the list of things that, to update the city charter, they kept a list of things that they wanted to go back and revisit over the last hundred years, six or seven years.
That was written in two thousand twelve.
Yeah, that's left. So you've kept a longer list of things that, oh, we should update that, we should update. Anyway, the process would be to go through that, and we could say, is that a priority or not?
So you have to have an amendment, and you can only have one topic per amendment, so you may have multiple amendments, and each one has to be voted on separately. The law does not require orders, our charter require us to have a charter revision commission, but it is a good idea to have that. As a council, you could bring these things forward and ask for, you know, election to be held, put the wording on the ballot if the election happens, if there's a majority vote, then the charter is changed. But you can only have one topic per item, so you may have multiple amendments, but you vote on them separately. Now, the charter revision commission, in the, in the beginning, you have a charter commission, the council's kind of bound by their suggestions for the charter. With the revision commission, you're not, but usually there's deference given to, deference given to what they recommend. But council can come up with it without that, if you want your public to agree with that.
Takes about a year, by the way.
So you would, you would want to have it, it won't happen this November, it may not even happen in May, you'd be looking at it next November to have it on the ballot.
Again. Why don't you understand the process? Not saying it's priority, saying it could be priority, we need to go through the prioritization process. Because the staff's gonna work on this, it's gonna take them away from other things, is this important or not, right? May I go out of order on each other?
Yes.
I'm looking at, or you can use the, soon to be, part of the territory, okay. Since we're talking about that kind of topic, let's talk about number twelve, the process to update the master plan. Lori just handed something out.
I passed it out, or Lori passed it out. That's our, that's our ordinance, the master plan update. It's gotta be updated by ten-year, three and ten-year intervals. It can be updated more frequently than that, but this is the process to do so. Gotta go to PNC, public hearing, gotta go to council, public hearing, and a vote.
It's a lot easier to run SANTICOS because I just say, just go do it. Okay, so you have that document. I wanna make sure that everybody was aware of the process. Again, is it a priority? If it is, when? It will be a priority, by the way. It's just a matter of when it will be a priority. And that's, that's something that we're working for. Okay, that's all I'm gonna do on that topic. I'm trying to make up for your lost time. And may I suggest, Lori, that all this stuff that's written down, perhaps we could capture that and get that out to everybody on council so that we all have that and we can all be kind of cogitating, reflecting on it. Yeah, that's how it's gonna be.
Does that pass the state law about bond issues only once a year? Did that pass legislature?
Not yet.
Is that a similar issue to the whole, I'm just asking, are those things similar as opposed to a general election? As opposed to the whole charter?
No, it would be separate. There's nothing with the whole charter that would limit it to November at this point. And the bond elections, a lot of those bills died, and the one that survived, I don't know that it limits as much as it requires that you elaborate more on the bond proposals. I don't think it's the one that limits to November.
Which is good, because if it had been limited to just that uniform day of just November, that, that would put cities in a terrible position because now you'd create this quite a head imbalance, and it would be dumb. I'd say, no. You never know, you never wonder when I'm gonna be there. Number nine, back, can we go back up, don't know. Discussion on communication between city council and staff. Ty and I have been dealing with a certain procedure that's been in place for a while. The city charter reads a certain way. I was just looking at that this morning. The charter specifically says that we, as council members, cannot direct the activities of staff. Just wanna be very clear about that. That's in the city charter, that's not my opinion. There has been a practice that Ron and Mayor Schultz had played a place in terms of how communication goes back to court between council members and staff. And that practice has been, from my experience, is things need to be vetted through Ron or one of the historic reports, and then those guys can report back through. That would be like Linda and Jeff. Go Ron, go those two guys, then it gets distributed, the work gets distributed, and then it comes back through the same channel. A secondary part, I'm kinda critical of, if I'm gonna be wasting your time, or Lori sent something to you guys for you to send, something that's a waste of your time, frankly. Because you're not editing it, I'm guessing. But I thought I'd just put it out there for a discussion, in terms of, maybe you talk about it, because you're CEO of the city, you're city manager. What is your preference? And then let's talk about it.
Well, I guess first and foremost, I trust my staff. They're all very good people, so, you know, I don't basically ride roughshod over this, this process. The charter says what it says, so we have to live by that first and foremost, for how my protection, for your protection, do. Because the alphabet says you can't do that, you can't do that. But typically, my practice has been, my, my senior executive team of Molly and Linda and Jeff and I, the three of us are there. If you can't find me for whatever reason, or if it's something Jeff directly deals with, like utilities, for example, if you go to them, they let me know, she's copying me on the email, and then we go forward. So the charter, first and foremost, is pretty specific on that thing. Again, I'm a little looser on that, but at the same time, I don't want you all in trouble because there are people out there that maybe for whatever error or shoot at you, and we go forward. So it's worked fairly well, the way to do it right now. But again, with a new group of elected officials in there, I'm certainly open to hear that, because at the end of the day, it's all about trust. And I trust my staff, and hopefully we trust each other to act accordingly.
I think one of the big issues, from my point of view, is it seems like, kind of, kind of information, every single question has to come to you. That seems overwhelming, because I, obviously, none of the city council is going, I would assume, direct any city employee to do anything. That's beyond our purview and our, and our task. But if you have a question, like, for example, how do I do, if I wanted to do this, how do I do this? Does everything like that have to come to you? I mean, I, I understand why you should be copying, but it just seems like, as Tim said, it seems like an enormous burden. There's just questions and just like, is there, what's the process, you know, Laura, what's the process that I go through for this? But I gotta, I mean, I'm not, I'm not telling her to do anything. I'm just, I don't know. And it just seems like there's gotta be some way that we can reach out just for information, not to direct anybody to do anything. And copy this, or you're a loop, but I mean, it just seems like, how do you, how would you, how can you handle it?
That's why I've got Jeff and Rita and Lori, and Linda and Molly there, they oversee, but at some point, where you draw that line, you stay as far as how, how, how far down can you reach?
So, so here, I'm just gonna read what the city charter says, section five point oh four, freedom from interference. It shall be unlawful. There you go, right? Get more things, more laws you're gonna break than you ever thought you were gonna break. It shall be unlawful for the city council or any of its members to dictate to the city manager the appointment of any person to office or employment. We can't tell Ron who to hire, right? City councilors' members will not interfere in any manner with the city manager in the performance of the duties of that office or prevent him from exercising his own judgment in the appointment of officers and employees whose employment, appointment, or supervision are reserved by this charter for the city manager. We can't tell him who you can hire. I'll simplify. I like my curfew language. Except for the purpose of inquiry. The city council and its members shall deal with the, with the city staff solely through the city manager. And either the council or any member, not having administrative or executive functions under this charter, shall get order, shall get orders to any of the supporters. We can't tell him what to do, publicly or privately, can't take Laura behind the scenes, have her mind buried, can't say, could you just do this for me? And I've never done it. We did have, and even in my first year, we had a city council member directing activities of staff. Can't do that. And, and, and you just can't do that. Can't say, would you please call, I'm directing an activity right now, right? So it says, except for inquiry, but let's be respectful of time as well. Think about all the things that Laura's worked on. She's got eighty-five people asking her a zillion things. Some of the things, he could probably answer because he's been doing stuff for ever, right? He can answer some of these questions. I just look at the back half, I would just suggest that we look at that process. There was a, I mean, when I came on, there was a practice letter from my Schultz, but that's not out there anymore. But we gotta be respectful of Ron and his staff. If I'm the CEO of the organization, I don't, you know, if you're the CEO, how do you want that to work? How would that make you feel? But on the, on the return information, stuff goes from Laura to you guys and then us. So I'm just wondering if we can take a little bit of thought about efficiency and say, it can go VFR direct, pilot term, free pilots out there. Like, miss anybody on that one?
I guess my question is, for council protection, if, for example, Brian sends something to Laura, Laura can respond to Brian and copy me, does that get you in any trouble?
Yeah, I just, to end this.
The purpose is an inquiry, you could, you could say that that, if it's an inquiry. Now, if he's asking her to do something, it doesn't go through you, but the purpose is an inquiry. Now, it also talks about inquiry and investigation, so if there's a complaint, and you're investigating your complaint, then you have the right to ask questions. Of course, you're part of the city manager. But the initial communication should probably go through you. The response doesn't necessarily have to, as long as you're CC on it. I think that's where the disconnect is that he's talking about, doesn't have to go from Laura back to Jeff to you to them. So my, my thing on that.
As long as it's okay for Laura to respond, or give back to Brian.
The question I, you know, I looked at a couple of articles that dealt with this whole relationship, and then I looked at a few cities and what they do. And commonly, it said, the speaking to the city manager and to the department heads, it was commonly a route of communication that existed between council and the city. Now, it said, and, and this supports always CC, you know, city manager, making sure that, look. I have a city manager going, okay, who's the expert in this area? Okay, I'm gonna go ask a question. And I go, okay, Laura, you know, okay, oh, what do I have to, you know, I really want this figured out, and I know what you're going for here. But it just seems to me in other cities, at least at that level, you know, in realizing not directing what to do, just as inquiry. And there are two different places in the charter, like you said, three point one nine, or three point oh nine, where it talks about inquiries and investigations. You know, I don't think there's a.
I'm not going down that side.
I know, but then it says inquiry, and so I'm just trying to figure out, if I know what inquiry is, then what do you do here, you know?
First of all, I think it boils down to trust, right? If I'm in Ron's shoes, I wanna, I wanna be aware of all the communication going on, because as we're all walking out of the community, and Ron, in this role, Ron shows a lot more with the communities I've shared. Because, because he's aware that there's gonna be high expectations and I'm supposed to know everything. You know, even though it's an unfair expectation. So I think Ron ought to know all the communication. I haven't had a problem copying Ron on everything I've done with the city, with all the staff. I mean, that hasn't ever been an issue. I just look at time and, and, you know, I've seen things get delayed just because, you know. I'm just looking away, I think you're just thinking about the efficiency of that. So I go to Linda, I go to, I go to Jeff, I don't, and I go to Molly, I don't go directly to Laura, I just don't, because I think that.
But that's the initial process.
That's the initial process.
And that's the way it should be, because of what you said.
Or it's not one of his department heads. That's, I'm talking about his department heads right now. That's who I go to.
His direct reports.
Whose job is to manage the resources that are reporting to them. That's their job, it's not my job. So I'm trying to hold people accountable to what their job is. So I go to, for all things related to development and everything, I go to Jeff. Copy Ron, it's just what I do. And, and then all of a sudden, Jeff says, oh, that's mine, you never wanted, hey, where's the poop bags on the, you know, it's a time bomb, right? Where's the poop bags on the new trail, Jeff? I'll make a priority, done with that. Anyway, I, I haven't had a problem with the way it's worked. I think it's a step that's added is the way it comes back, it just looks inefficient to me, that's me.
Long as you're okay with that happening for their protection, then I'm good with it.
The inquiry needs to go to you.
Right.
Or Jeff, or Linda.
Your department heads.
And then you can delegate, if it's something that we've already dealt with in the staff meeting, and you don't need to bother Laura, and you answer it, you shoot it back, that's more efficient, like what you were talking about. But if you delegate to Laura, and you say, hey, Ty has this question, you can answer it, you've told her to answer it, as long as she directs it back to him and CCs you. I don't see a problem with that.
That's fine.
But the initial needs to go through you.
But we have to abide by this number one rule, right? It's the expectation that we all said that we would do, we would respect each other's time. And you all, I don't, we as a council, don't know all the things that the staff is working on. We don't. And we come in and we say, let's find a new hot priority. Is that fair? Is that respectful of somebody's time if we don't have the management team understanding what's being asked? So I just think, I'm just looking for equity, fairness, and build trust, is what I'm looking for. So I just think, I'm just looking for equity, fairness, and build trust, is what I'm looking for.
Okay, if I can, one of the reasons Ron delegated the ability for councils to contact Jeff, myself, or Molly, is to expedite it, because his demands for time is right there. But people do expect him to know everything, just like they expected of you. That's why we are constantly CCing him. So he's aware of it, and he tells, don't expect that we're sending the emails. That's right, that's what we tell them about it. But we don't hold it up just because he hasn't seen it. We share the information and get it back to Molly as soon as possible.
I didn't know I could go directly there.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I just want to be clear about that.
I didn't know that.
We need to.
Let's crush your name, that's why.
Jeff, Lori, Molly.
Wait, you've got as much experience as I do, in ten days.
In our, in our computer here, we don't seem to have the department heads connected on email.
Yeah, they are.
Oh.
Everybody's on email.
Well, I think.
Well, no, in the directory.
Direct reports. Maybe you need to clarify what's a department and what's a department report.
No, I'm saying there's no, there's no directory that says department head.
Oh, like that. Oh, I just know them.
Well, yeah, I know them. We don't.
Don't hire it, the chart will show you.
As you said, the other thing that's confusing.
It's pretty simple. It's Jeff, it's Molly, and it's Linda. That's it.
And you go over to.
And Lori, you don't know who to go to, or Ron. So I go to these guys. When Dan was around, I went to Dan, went to these guys, and I just copied Ron and everything. I never violated that.
Previous mayors in the past have asked me, like, if Brian and I are having a conversation about something, they wanted to know that. So that's part of my discussion with you, is if we're gonna have a discussion about different things, previous mayors have asked me to keep getting the loop on what's going on.
Depending on topics, not personal topics, right? So.
Sometimes on, say, utilities or something, I'll have Jeff, Ron, and then put Mike on there too, as a CC, just knowing that it's information, and making sure that's, I've been doing that. Not expecting a response from them, but assuming that then Jeff's gonna ask Mike what it is, or Danny, if it's a clean up trail, knowing that then he has a direct thing. If it's a CC, you guys are usually the main focus. That's how I've been doing it.
And I'm good with that.
And then I'll tell you, there are times that I've responded directly to you, but it's because one of them told me.
Yeah. You guys figure out your process.
Keep that in mind.
There is a hierarchy chart, if you're given it in your orientation book, if you need a new copy, please let us know, we'll give you one. But that helps you, you know, who's falling under Jeff, who falls under me, you know, what Molly's responsible for, and then you're getting more towards your source. I think you want to go on the email, and you click to, it doesn't say the departments, right?
Yeah, then you gotta put it yourself, I just.
Get to know a few people.
There's no city director. We'll figure it out.
When you email us, once you start doing it, the law is public, yes.
Okay, good?
Yes.
All right, that's just, we're just establishing a protocol right now, it's all, we build the trust. All right, next topic, council communication to the public, whether it's social media, town hall meetings, or others. This is me just throwing out some ideas to you guys. Ty and I have talked about this a couple of times, and he's already doing it. I had a town hall in February, you were there, you were there. It was the first time I've done a town hall. I was fun. The two hours, I stood there and asked questions, right? What was your biggest takeaway? There's some things I didn't know, and I said, I just don't know. And you and I have that conversation after the town hall. I was funny, that people expect me to know everything. But all they know is their one little thing. It's an unfair expectation, but that's just the way it is. My intention going forward is to do three town halls a year. That's what I committed to at the end of that town hall. I'm gonna do three. I'm lining them up probably for the end of June. Trying to get it lined up. And we'll communicate about that. I gotta get the question out of the first. I probably can help with that, I'm doing it on my own.
Are there any restrictions with respect to where you wanna have your community meetings? Because I'm thinking about the normal side yard.
You can wherever you want. Just recognize, some people are gonna ask you to pay. If you go to Cronkowski, they're pretty good for in-kind to cover a little of their staff, but generally, they give you the use of the facility, because of the numbers that I told them on my last one. But I just gave a donation anyway, I was like, who's that actually, that's a huge facility. He didn't work in mine, but you know, like we said earlier, if multiple of us are gonna attend somebody's, you gotta declare the meeting. What Ty has done is he's included Don Durden, and his.
Richard Chapman.
Um, Richard Chapman has. I think that's cool. I think that we can demonstrate power of the real team. I would suggest if you're gonna do a town hall, maybe you invite somebody else and change it up. I would encourage that.
I was, yeah, since current is in my district, you know, asking one of the, yeah, SD board members to know. People have questions about school stuff. Again, it's the connectivity of partnership.
And yours is in a district, is what you're doing. I'm not, I'm not funding anything. But play it out. If everybody does three here, I, it's eighteen town halls, the community's gonna get sick of me.
Well, we peaked at five for mine, so just to put it perspective.
Five people?
Five people.
As long as you have it open to the public. So you can't have, you know, invite only, you have to have your side yard open and people come and go, which you.
And, well, let's say you can't restrict it to District Four.
You can. You can restrict it to your district, you just can't turn people away, or say this is a private meeting. I mean, you really just need to leave it open.
You did that for a second.
Well, but like, if somebody drive by.
I do this for District One, in my case. Send me your address and I'll give you the location, where you live in the district. Open to anyone who lives in the district, or when Richard did it, I said, anyone who lives within the county in his district. Just send me your address, I'll look it up.
But you ultimately have it in a public place.
And it is in a public space, yeah.
What I'm gonna do is very public, you'll know about it. And I'll absolutely share with you guys ahead of time what I intend to talk about, but I'm always gonna take questions at town halls. I think that's what people wanna be able to bet. So, okay. Social media, you guys know, I'm a big fan of it. To me, I like to engage the community, but I'm doing it in a way that I'm not putting myself at risk. I don't repost anything online. Girls at B I C, they, they're pretty prolific at, I think they post it before I even finish it. Half the time. I'm gonna continue posting on my mayor page, on NASA, my favorite mayor page, be the one that's linked to you from the city website, my mayor Facebook page. I'm just gonna keep it like it is, I'll manage it myself. And I'll continue to post things out there. My last posting, forty-nine hundred people read. That's where I talked about the Civil Nature Preserve, just visiting that, forty-nine hundred people read that. It's crazy. I would encourage you guys to be on Facebook. But don't get yourself in trouble. I think the community likes it. It's not a place for us to air dirty laundry. It's not a place for us to grit and moan about things we don't like. One of the things, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I try to stay pretty upbeat in my posts.
Feedback, not necessarily your opinion or what your input, but hey, this is going on, give your feedback.
Yeah, I always stay factual. Very rarely do I have my opinion out there, but I try to stay factual, try to stay upbeat, try to include, solicit feedback, try to respond to things I like people, I like the response. I'm not afraid if I say, I would just all be open. I don't like the transparent term, but I'm a pretty transparent guy anyway. But I would just encourage you guys to do that. Is there anything else that you guys wanted to add about just communications that we do? I think that we can, we collectively, if we do this stuff, I think if you wanna write articles in the back, we'll write it. Write, probably write it for you. It's commitment. Next one I'm gonna write about my first ninety seconds. I'll be jonesing, I'll get into the punch a little bit. I just wanna encourage, I think people are memory for that. Nothing else I wanna add? Anything you wanna add?
No, I think just be careful what you put out there.
Again, I keep it factual. I don't put my opinion. And I think with Garrett on board, I know that the city is putting a lot more information out there. But again, I remember it's on Facebook.
Yeah, I think to your point, I think that being involved in Facebook will help that group.
That group.
But voter turnout's still ten percent, I mean, if you can get, you know, more of that points made in your city hall, like, where?
People don't care.
People don't care. So are they a victory thing?
I think it is too. I think that's a great idea. So communication in general, I think that'll be, again, that's a high priority. That'll be a high priority for all of us, that we get this community engaged. I have several ideas I'll throw at all of you later. Okay. Nothing else I wanna say on that, unless you got, anything else you guys wanna add, ask. I'm getting this wrapped up pretty quick. Concept of specialization by council. This is not my idea, this idea's been suggested to me. Prior councils, there was this thing called the Government Roundtable, that never happened while I was on council, but they used to have different council members might attend, you might get to attend two per year. I've never been on one at all, so I don't know what goes on with this. But that idea of being there just like once or twice every once in a while, those utilities, how the utilities used to work. I don't remember. All I've seen is one briefing on utilities since I've been on council. But we're the board for the utilities. So it's once a year meeting, I guess. And then other things would pop up. There's been a lot going on in rural Sharon Drive and these annexations, and it's gone to all of us. I call Nina, say, you're finally, yep, then I'm gonna go reply to her. What an utter waste of my time, and if Nina's replied, great, if she wouldn't have replied, I'd be willing to. But I think just in terms of specialization, I don't think that we're all gonna be experts on everything. I think it's a bad idea. And I think like, if I think about anything historical related, I'm not gonna mess with it. I'm just like, I know you have a passion for that, and I wanna suggest that we specialize as council members. But we aren't all trying to one-up each other, we're a team. And anything related to historic, I would direct it to Nora, and it's like, you take it. If it's related to something hard, I always direct it to Nina. But, you know, maybe you wanna be the environmentalist on city council, maybe you wanna be the safety, and, you know. I think it's an idea to ponder. I'm not trying to make a decision right now, but as things start coming up, I'm not, I don't think that we should all try to be experts on everything. I'm not even gonna pretend to be. When things come up related to history, I'm always gonna defer to you, always. Things have been up in Lake Shoreline, Ty and I didn't agree on the way in front. I'm just gonna direct everything to Ty. And I tell people, he's the expert. He spends more time on that than anybody. I'm not gonna try to duplicate his expertise and therefore take up twice as much time as Molly. It's unfair. I'm trying to be respectful of time, my time and everyone else's time. So I just encourage, as we go forward, the topics come up, I'm gonna keep rolling that around at you and say, let's specialize and be respectful of each other's time. That's the concept there. Does that sound like a bad idea, or okay idea?
I think one of the things I question is, is, you know, that conversation, if you're gonna be the person to be go to, or certainly if you're gonna concentrate, you're right, you're gonna get involved, but then it's, it's, okay, when do you have the conversation to find out what information that you have? So what do you know about Lake Shore? Say, you're gonna give me information, or you're not gonna give me your opinion on it, but, and then you're gonna call and say, well, what's going on with Lake Shore? Before you know it, you have different people all asking you about what's going on with Lake Shore. So then I'm thinking, is this a, is this a walking quorum? Yeah, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's, again, the community should. Say, if I have the information on Shoreline, I'm gonna make sure that the city manager has that information. So if you ask, he has the info and he's been in all the meetings. And/or if you give the community liaison, that's your person to keep from that quorum issue. But I think Ron does a great job with that.
Shoreline's a great example, and I'll tell you what, so there's four really prolific writers as a relationship. Y'all know who they are. And they started talking to me, and I went, talk to Ty, talk to Ty. I know he's got it. That's all I'm doing. And I'm not saying, hey, Ty, can you tell me what you told, I'm not even pulling up. You have an elected official who's responding to you, talk to Ty, is what I do, and I'm done with it. That's how I'm handling it.
But if it's a council question, you direct it to Ron, and Ron will give the information to you.
Yeah.
Because he's gonna get the information from Ron anyway. The information he's got came from us, so you can get that same information. But if it's a constituent, is what you're saying.
That's what I'm doing.
Or, you know, or if it's a topic, you think, let's say it's a historic district, you know, you have a business there, well, then you know you're gonna pick me, or maybe it's Tim to have that relationship with, but then knowing you can't talk to someone else. You know, Matt and I are dealing with some B I S D things, and we have to acknowledge that we're gonna be the two that are gonna do that, and then Ron will know about it, if you guys have questions on that.
I'm not discouraging if you're wondering about whatever you wanna spend your time on. I don't care what you spend your time on. But I'm gonna suggest that we don't just try to do a little driven and drive here, like on some of the committees that appear in existence. One potato, two potato, two potato, four, and then, okay, now it's your turn again. You're like, well, what the hell happened in the last other four meetings that I was a part of? That doesn't make any sense to me. This is always a thing, so it's still a good idea.
Well, usually, if it's a hot topic in a particular council member's district, your first order is to ask them, are you handling this, are you responding? Do I, if you are, I'm not going to. Now, as Ty and I have done with B I S D, he asked me, he said, I know this individual's in your district, do you have a problem with me joining the, and I said, absolutely not. So it's just that respect, that you don't want two council members responding to a topic. It's just communication between council members, and just make sure you're not stepping on something that's happening in your district, or my district, or your district, that you're handling, I don't need to be involved, so.
On the annexation thing, Sharon Drive, I was thinking of that.
I wanna talk about that, but I'm not going to, because I can't break the rules. I'm gonna tell you what's going on, then I can't. No, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about business. Yes, sir.
You know, a lot of this stuff comes down to your all-time limitations over how much time you have. In the past, we've had some councils that were very active, that had free time. Others had jobs, eight to five, they weren't available during the date, as we go forward. But back to specialization, et cetera, you know, I'm looking at the list of priorities. Right. And that here today, there's ten things on here. Now, could you have two council members take three of these areas, and be kind of the champions, the expert on these type of things, and go forward? Because that way, you're involved, and you would encompass the city council meetings, if not just staff talking about it, it's the elected official talking about it. So a lot of this comes down to your time, ability to commit to some of the tough stuff. And we're working hard to have these type of meetings, sedating and go through the stuff and all, but again, new lives, new life, new family here, is how much time you had to commit to this job. As the mayor heard, he heard say earlier, averaged twenty hours a week. Ty works, he got a full-time job there.
We get a full-time job. Or sometimes.
It's not just, you know, you just don't show them twice a month anymore, and you go to the meetings. So if it comes to an actual work, we're certainly open to that type of stuff, mayor, as far as the specialization goes, if you wanna have some council members to focus on a certain issue.
As it relates to the project nominator, by the way, that's called sponsorship. And whether that's the right grouping of projects, you know, I would suggest that we do, so council member four two, somebody who has a passion about it, obviously not three, where you get engaged, and then you're a sponsor of them. You're the champion of those things, right? That's what the language is called. It's a project sponsor, not a champion. That's. So more to come on that, not making any decisions, just wanna talk, see if the concept makes sense to you guys, and then as we get further, we'll start doing that. Okay, we're down to the last item. By the way, this is fun, right? I love this meeting with all you guys. I think that we're probably, it's probably the most open conversation that I've had as a council. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we used to have them on a regular basis, and then people got busy, and council members got busy.
Right.
They decreased.
Which is a great segue to this last item. There used to be, there used to be a quota of discussions. Personally, I'm not a fan of like a fixed meeting, once a month or once a quarter. I'm not a fan of it, because then it just becomes a compulsory meeting, and we get tired of it, versus on a as-needed basis. But we'll never try to do this in front of a public audience again, scheduled calendars, that's a terrible idea in mind. My wife pointed that out to me. Sorry for doing that to everybody. But thanks for being the hero, and I was just about to say, this is a dull idea, and you saved us all. When do you guys wanna do these, like, we're gonna do some deep dives on some topics, two, three hours out of whack. I gotta look at the working class over here. I gotta look at the working class over here, when do we, these guys can do it anytime. Shorter travel schedules. What's best for you guys? I don't know, like Wednesdays off limits. Is it during the day, or is it Saturday morning? Is this, is this too much stress on the staff to do this on Saturday mornings? And you all don't have to be at it, I mean, I'd be topical. Is it best to do it during the weekday, or on the weekend, is it best to do it at night? I don't know, I don't know anything about your work plans.
I'm fairly flexible, Mondays are horrible for me. They'd be easier as the week goes on, and the afternoons are always better than the mornings, that's the deal. I'm fairly flexible. Saturdays, I, I don't think I have anything going on Saturdays right now, so.
I'm not requiring it to be Saturday, I just figured it'd be easy, cause I didn't know each other. So you do Fridays, maybe you like Friday, Fridays get easy, Thursdays? Other than, so a lot of times we'll do an hour or two ahead of council meetings on Tuesday, that will happen frequently as well. But if we wanted to do, let's just say we wanted to spend really a serious three or four hours with Juan, when he's ready to go through the priorities, and say, "Here's what we're making." Right? I'm not saying that's gonna happen inside of two weeks, by the way, that may take a little bit of time. Haven't done it many times on my own, that takes time. But if we wanna go through and really talk through, and start to say, let's, what if we were to number these one through fifty-two, everybody are up here? We gotta have that conversation. Cause we all can't be fighting for number one. Everybody said there's gonna be groups, there's gonna be a group of one A's, one B's, one C's, and then a group of two, there, those are gonna be kind of filler work. But here's what really happens, what's gonna really get attention? We're not gonna follow the priorities, we're gonna, we're gonna violate this discipline frequently until we get it, it becomes a culture. A two B's gonna obviously become a hot topic, cause a constituent asks you about it, and then you're gonna make it a number one? Ah, that's really not a number one priority. Our responsibility as council members, just on the top of our positions, is gonna be able to help the public understand, these are our priorities, right? But anyway, I think a deep dive on that topic, if we're ready to do that, that may take three or four hours. Right? You wanna break bread, have dinner, eat over lunch, while Juan's talking, or eat over, do it in the afternoon on a Friday, or... Can't do everything two hours before a council meeting, it just doesn't work. I'm just asking.
Friday afternoons, if staff has to be involved, that's when we're really pushing to get everything compiled, the packets, every two weeks, so keep that.
Every two weeks, absolutely. So what I'm hearing is no real time constraints, we do during the day. So how much notice do you need from a work standpoint? Two weeks, week?
A week, two weeks.
Couple weeks, two weeks notice?
A week notice, I'm sure. A week's notice should be fine, I, I could, I can be flexible.
Okay.
I will, and perish it on the scheduling requests, cause I've noticed recently, it's only for two weeks. If we can, try to request a month out.
Yeah.
I mean, cause there's really...
So, we'll have stuff planned, or...
Right, right.
I make my schedule a month, or really kinda track it.
I do too, like, I got one planned out, I can put it in the year. Your travel schedule is, right? And life happens, right? And we all, occasionally we're just gonna miss them, but on some of these things, we want as many years as we possibly have. And when you miss a long one, and I was gonna do the hard ones, because I'm, I'm not gonna be there on Tuesdays, you know? For maybe five public hearings. No, eight twenty-eight, I just thought it was a county meeting on, on Monday, but I'm not gonna do it.
No, no, we have to have your picture.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
I think at the beginning, when so much is important, I think it's, I think it's just gonna be in need for more time.
I think coming out of this, we'll, we'll put our heads together, shoot out some stuff for you guys, pick some topics that we wanna meet on, let, let that be towards the schedule, or you can help us get that scheduled. We'll find dates, and we'll, and we'll do an email going forward, sort of like a travel report. Pam, Nick, Ma, Jim, Doug, Red, Larry, Mary, Jeanette, and the rest of the staff. Thank you guys for being here this morning. I know it's, I know it's the weekend, I know it's the first of the holiday, but thank you guys all for being here. The discussion today. We are adjourned.
Council, please don't forget we're doing the history next Tuesday.
Something, yeah. Did you get your photo?
No.
I said, "Call me then."
I like the guy.
I have that one.
Yeah, that's good. It's definitely that, like...
Do you have...
And I'm just wondering if Mike Scott was... He was elected to the hard, hard, really process.
Hi, thank you.
Possession, and I basically...
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So, I had to tell him that. I'm taking this to the knowledge of someone related to the father's son. But he was at his first meeting, we had a little discussion, and so I'm getting there.
I got, it wasn't what, what, but it just was like, a summer, fire, and that was like...
She doesn't ever bang, she doesn't sue me. That's true, too.
It is true.
My bank just never hurt everything else.
That's, that's rare.
Bye, Lori.
See ya.
Bye, Lori.
Been here so long, I cut this way.
Call the fire department, you know, invite...
Those guys, those guys are good, that's why I...
Those guys are good.
Yeah, and I just, I'm gonna try and set up the day.
Okay.
First line of the day, when that's yours.
Yes.
If it was right next to you, and you were gonna go to Nixon. Probably too close to home, you shouldn't.
That was actually the first thing, when I walked into our dump, I'd sit there, and you'd have a lawn chair firing. Hey, I don't think you can lift a ladder.
Who that type of can do that?
Yeah, yeah, you know what, I just...
Was it electronic? No, it's, it's a copy. I think that looks good, though.
I think it's cool.
So see, that'll be a little bit of a start on your minutes.
Okay, so, um, Molly, I should be reminding her to come back, because I don't know, I've been really worrying about... Just really worried about doing that, because finding future accounts is to automatically...